Good evening and welcome. This is a regular meeting of the Princeton Planning Board on October 6th, 2022. Pursuant to Section 13 of the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of the time and place at this meeting has been given by prominently posting the amended resolution of regularly scheduled meetings of the Planning Board of Princeton for February 2022 through January 2023. A copy was filed with the Clerk of Princeton on January 7th, 2022. Legal notice on the adoption of said resolution was published in the January 14, 2022 edition of the Princeton Packet. Notice of this meeting also has been posted to the municipal website, princetonnj.gov/calender. Pursuant to Executive Order 107, due to the ongoing state of emergency in New Jersey regarding COVID-19, notice that during the declared state of emergency, all regular and special meetings of the Princeton Planning Board will be held electronically via Zoom, was transmitted to the Princeton Packet, Town Topics, and The Times, and was filed with the Clerk of Princeton on April 8th, 2020, and again on January 6th, 2021. Please note that this meeting is being recorded. During hearings on applications for development, members of the public will have an opportunity to comment and ask questions. Questions may be asked after each applicant's witness has testified. Public comment is heard by the board after an applicant's representatives have finished their presentations and have been questioned by Planning Board members and staff. Those wishing to comment orally should virtually raise your hand by clicking on the raise hand icon at the bottom of your screen, or if participating by phone, by pressing star nine. Oral comments will be taken in the order in which hands were raised. We ask with respect that members of the public express your views in three minutes or less. We will have a countdown clock to help speakers keep track of time. Please note that speakers who exceed three minutes will be interrupted. Inappropriate public comment containing obscenity, hate speech, or relating to matters not before the board will be muted. Carrie, will you call the roll, please?
Yes, would you like me to roll, read the roll call?
Yes, please.
Julie, Ms. Capizoli?
Here.
Mr. Chow?
Here.
Mr. Cohen?
Here.
Mr. McGowan?
Here.
Hello?
Here.
Carrie, we, oh, I'm sorry.
Ms. Sacks? Mr. Texarney?
Here.
Mr. Taylor?
Here.
Mr. Bodikheimer? Mr. Bodikheimer?
I saw him raise his hand.
And he's waving his hand.
Yes, 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 yes.
And Mrs. Wilson?
Here.
We have a call.
Thank you. So Carrie, I, your volume skipped out for a minute. Did everybody's name get called? Anybody whose name did not get called, please raise your hand if you're a member of the board. Mr. Quinn?
Mr. Quinn.
Okay. Good. Um, thank you. Let's go right into announcements. I want to turn to Mr. Mueller, our attorney Jerry Mueller, for uh, one announcement related to some litigation. But before we get to Jerry, are there any other members of the board or staff who have announcements? Okay, Jerry, why don't you fill us in on Greenberg et al. v. the Planning Board of Princeton? Oh, I'm sorry, Justin, you had your hand up.
Yes, yes. Thank you, Madam Chair, and good evening, everybody. I just wanted to give our regular update on the master plan as we're moving along now. It, if you go to engage that PrincetonMasterPlan.org, we have the community visioning survey up. Um, that'll lead into, that'll be up until the end of October, more or less. Uh, that'll lead into our first open house, which is scheduled for November 30th at the library. Those are the two biggest dates right now, and I encourage anyone listening to uh, sign up for notifications at that same website, engage.pristinemasterplan.org. Um, I will be attending the Flood and Stormwater Commission meeting tomorrow, uh, the library's Children's Book Festival Saturday, um, and some other events, Affordable Housing Board Tuesday, PBAC Wednesday, and then I'll be back here next week for the, uh, Planning Board meeting. Um, so please spread the word, um, and there will soon enough be on the 15th, uh, thank you, Mr. McGowan, for helping to set up a meeting with the Wooderspoon Jackson Neighborhood Association, and we are off to the races on, uh, this first community visioning survey.
Great, thank you. David, Mr. Cohen?
I just wanted to draw to your attention that Mia has joined the meeting, so she can be listed as present.
Own as present, thank you.
Thank you, David.
Um, Jerry Mueller? Why don't you?
Yes, um, you might recall that some time ago, not that long, um, the board approved an application, um, by Simplified Living um, on Humbert Street and Humbert Place for a, uh, for a three-unit, um, I think it was a minor site plan, um, with sixteen variances. Um, for the three units that, rather than fronting on Humbert Street, which is a public street, um, they were perpendicular to Humbert Street, uh, necessitating a variety of variances that the board granted. The, uh, neighbors who would object at the hearing to the application, they thought it was too dense, um, filed a lawsuit. And it looked like for quite a while that it might be settled. One of the conditions of the approval was that an easement be drafted, which provided for the parking for the neighbors on the other side of Humbert Place. And that was never forthcoming. The applicant was required to do that. Numerous, really numerous requests were made of the applicant and the various attorneys, uh, it had to prepare the easement. That was not done. Um, and litigation was filed by the, uh, by the neighbors, um, basically seeking either to get the easement or to invalidate the approval. Um, the assignment judge for Superior Court of New Jersey versus County Judge Lowey, um, who just became assignment judge pretty recently, uh, struck down the approval on two grounds. Number one, it said there was a variance that should have been applied for by the applicant from a section of the code which requires that if the lot fronting on the public street is less than a half an acre, um, that all the units have to front on the public street. Um, the applicant never applied for that, and that was never granted. Now, that in itself should have been sufficient, would have been sufficient, actually, to invalidate the approval, but the judge went on it at some length to say that basically he saw this approval with all of the variances that were granted. And you might recall, the idea was we looked at it, um, not in the traditional way, um, but, uh, basically broke down the, um, the application into three separate, what was called sublots by the administrative staff. Um, and, uh, that necessitated a number of variances that were granted. The court said that this was really a form of legislative action, a form of rezoning, and it's not permissible. The court did not have to go that far, um, but it did. Um, and it basically, we cited a number of cases which said if a board, a land use board is taking action which substantially changes the character of the neighborhood, or the character of the district, uh, that it does not have the jurisdiction to do that. Now, every one of those cases actually involved a D variance rather than C variances, which is what the case was here, that is, variances from bulk standards. Um, but the court applied it to, to, um, I think, to this case here, and they said this was clearly a case in which the board recognized that it was really going beyond what the zoning permitted, um, but proceeded anyway. So it struck down the approval. And that raises really significant questions as to how far does this go? Um, in fact, later on tonight, we'll be hearing a concept review where the court's decision, we're going to have to grapple with that in that context to see whether it makes sense applying it, because it's very unclear in what, when you would apply it and when you wouldn't. The court was clearly disturbed, but so many variances were necessary in that case. Um, but that's basically what the, what the court did. Now, an appeal can be taken either by us or by the, um, by Simplify. We don't have, we have no idea what Simplify is going to do. Uh, our recommendation, and we sent out a, my associate Martina Belli sent out a, uh, a lengthy memo that all the members of the board received, and which she suggested that we not, uh, appeal this. She thought we probably, that we would not succeed if we appealed. And I agree with that. So that's where we are in that, and we'll talk about that more later on in the context of that concept review that's before the court tonight, uh, that's before the board tonight.
Um, thank you for that. I want to add just a couple of thoughts. My recollection is that one of the units faced the street, one faced the side street, and one basically fronted the backyard. And so a lot of those variances had to do with, with side yard, side yard, backyard, front, you know, this sort of oddball. And at the end of the day, the only thing that made me comfortable with that is that the, that the homes across the street also face that driveway or Humbert Lane or whatever. And, um, and so it did not, for that reason, seem to me to be, you know, out of, um, you know, dramatically out of character, although, as I think I said at the time, I sort of would have preferred to see two units facing forward. But that's, be that as it may, I was interested to see that the judge sort of went, went further than even had to, to, um, opine. Uh, and I think it, I think it is something we need to be, um, really cautious about, uh, going forward.
Yeah, and I, I'd underline that, uh, the idea that we need to be cautious, because we really don't know what, what the parameters are for this decision and how extensive it is. Um, the court talked at some length about how this could change, could change the character of the neighborhood. Well, it was one additional unit. Um, and one could argue that it really was consistent with the character of the neighborhood, Louisa, as you just indicated. Um, but if that's inconsistent with the character of the neighborhood and this whole notion of, um, that you can't, you can't adopt and approve ordinances which basically change the character of the district now applies to C variances. Um, we have to, as I say, work with an abundance of caution in determining when we want to go ahead with C variances. Um, there's been many cases in the past, but we've granted a number of variances. Usually a lot of them were in a sign context. But, uh, we have to grapple with this now, and it's, the, uh, the water is, uh, is not crystal clear.
Yeah, it was also, the, the whole bad faith issue with the applicant was very frustrating and troubling, too, because, well, just, Councilwoman Sacks, I see your hand is raised.
Yeah, um, so just, so I understand, um, uh, you, uh, Jerry, um, filed litigation, there was litigation from you, which was, right, that, so there was, there was, they filed something, and then you filed something to enforce the, uh, the conditions of approval?
To enforce the easement condition. Yeah, we filed.
To enforce the easement, easement condition, yeah.
We filed a cross claim, and the court ultimately ruled that that was moot. Um, but he denied the, the request for relief under the cross claim without prejudice, uh, indicating that this might be an open area. We don't know what the applicant's going to do.
So I actually just, just, my question was, I, I don't remember, um, the board approving that litigation and generally, uh, was, was that, who, whose decision was that to, um, litigate? Because it, I, I, and maybe I was absent or I missed it, but I, I don't remember the board approving that.
Well, the, the litigation itself was filed by the, uh, by the objectors. Right, this was just a cross claim that, that we filed during the course, but then that was a judgment that, that we made to try to enforce the, um,
And who was we?
I'm sorry?
Who was we who made that judgment?
That was my office as part of our handling of the litigation.
Okay.
It was, it was a minor part of the location.
Was there consultation with the, um, chair of the Planning Board or the Planning Office at all?
No.
Okay, um, and I'm just wondering, um, could not the, I, I think, um, I'm wondering, was there any thought given to, um, if the conditions of approval are not met? Um, uh, it seems to me that, you know, another possible avenue would have been to just say, um, you know, that we, that they can't go forward because the conditions have not been met, um, and that the board has no further jurisdiction over the matter.
Right, that's the alternative. The reason we filed the cross claim was if the court granted that and said, guys, prepare, that is, simplify, prepare an easement and work it out, it would have ended the litigation, and it would have made it frankly much less costly.
Okay, but there was definitely a judgment call there of those two.
Oh, yeah.
Right? So I'm just saying, like, in the future, when there, I mean, I think that was, uh, you know, um, uh, I think that should be discussed, at least with the Planning Board leadership and possibly with the Planning Board, because those are, you know, two paths which had significant, um, they were value judgments, and, and I, I think we should have a say in, you know, which direction our attorneys take.
Well, we have to discuss that more. I mean, uh, in the past, certainly every litigation I've been involved in, once litigation starts, it's the call of the, the attorneys as to how it should be handled.
Yeah, and I, I mean, it seemed to me, I was sort of glad to see in the memo that you had tried to make it right for the neighbors. I mean, this was an attempt to, to live up to a commitment that was made to the neighbors to provide for their access and parking, which was very important to the board. Uh, so, yeah, anyway.
No, I'm just saying that we could possibly have been done, you know, in a shorter step and, um, without, um, um, in, uh,
Could not have been done in a shorter step. It would have been a much longer step, because it would have involved, as it eventually did, um, going through a briefing and a trial and a decision by the court. The idea of, of the cross claim was to try to avoid that.
Yeah.
Okay, um, Mr. Cohen, I saw your hand up, but it never actually was raised electronically, so.
I, I, I'm no longer wanting to make a comment.
Okay, okay. Um, all right, so, um, if other questions, uh, occur to folks, you know, don't hesitate to reach out about them. This is, um, as, as Jerry said, could have sort of ripple effects. Um, and we'll have to just keep that in mind. Um, any other announcements before we go on to subcommittee reports and updates? Okay, any, anything to report from your, um, ad hoc committee, Mr. Quinn?
Uh, no, we are preparing our report and expect to distribute it to the board and present our recommendations at the second regular meeting in October.
Okay, your, your, your audio sounds very, um,
Oh, how does it sound now?
Much, much better.
Now that I've moved the microphone that goes with the headset down in the proper position. Yes, so, to repeat.
Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, to repeat, now that it can be caught, uh, we expect to finalize our report, distribute it to the board, and, uh, with recommendations in time for the second regular meeting of the month.
Okay, thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Um, moving on to minutes, we have four sets of minutes. Um, kudos to Ms. Phillip for continuing to, um, hammer away at minutes. We had so many meetings, uh, over the last year. Now, at least we're in 2022. Um, and we are catching up. So the first set of minutes to consider is from a special meeting on January 24th, 2022. Um, any comments? And if not, would someone like to move those minutes?
I'll move minutes.
Thank you. Moved by Mr. O'Donnell, seconded by?
I'll second it.
Thanks, Mr. McGowan. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Uh, any opposed or abstaining? Okay. Um, Zenon, were you not here?
I wasn't present.
Okay.
Yeah, I think I missed it as well.
Okay, so I think we can, we can take it for granted that Ms. Phillip will make adjustments for folks who are not eligible to vote. Is that correct, Carrie?
That's correct. Actually, if they are not eligible, they will not be noted in the, uh, roll call vote. Uh, if they were absent, uh, it's no need to abstain because you're not included in the roll call vote. So abstentions are not, do not fall in that category.
Okay. Um, the next set of minutes is February 3rd, from a regular meeting on February 3rd, 2022. Some like, like to move those?
I'll move approval.
Thanks, Mr. Quinn. Seconded?
I'll second.
Thanks, Mr. Chow. Moved by Mr. Quinn, seconded by Mr. Chow. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed or abstaining? Okay, the third set of minutes is from February 17th, 2022, another regular meeting.
I'll move them.
Um, okay.
Moved by Mr. Cohen, seconded by Ms. Capizoli. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed or abstaining? Okay, and finally, um, regular meeting from March 3rd, 2022.
I'll move those.
Thanks. Moved by Ms. Capizoli, seconded by?
I'll second.
I'll second.
Come.
Uh, seconded by Mr. McGowan. Thanks. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed or abstaining? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have a hearing. This is Nassau 195 LLC. This is a preliminary and final major site plan with variances at 195 Nassau Street slash nine dash 11 Charlton Street and 13 Charlton Street. This is block 47.01, lots 23, 26, and 27. File number P 2222 dash 232P.
Madam Chair, proof of publication surfaced or in order, and the board has jurisdiction.
Thank you. Um, I, Mr. Latizia, are you representing the applicant?
Yes.
Okay, and I understand we also have, um, someone here on behalf of a neighboring property owner?
Actually, that's Mr. DeGresia. I'm trying to, oh, good, he's being moved over now. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. So I'm assuming that, um, well, I'll, uh, hmm, sorry. First, I should turn to Mr. Dobremilsky and ask if he can, uh, set the table for us. Mr. Mueller, will you swear and Dan Dobremilsky, please?
Dan, could you raise your right hand?
Yes.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give? Be the truth.
I do.
So it's one or affirmed.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone.
I'm sorry, before we begin, uh, the proof of notice is in order.
Thanks, Carrie. Uh, Mr. Mueller noted that.
Oh, did he? I'm sorry.
Yes, that, we're good. Thank you. Go ahead, Dan.
Okay, I was going to share my screen now, if that's okay?
Sure.
Okay, can you all see that?
Yes.
So this is from the application, it's the building photographs, um, exhibit that was in the application. Uh, so I had a report on September 22nd, 2022. Uh, I'll go through that kind of point by point quickly here. Now, this application requests a major site plan approval to construct a new five-story, 45-unit apartment building on this 6.61-acre site pursuant to the standards of the Affordable Housing Overlay 1 Zone. The AHO1 Zone was established in 2020 with the objective of creating new affordable housing in the downtown area with onsite parking while preserving all street-facing buildings. The property consists of three lots near the southwest corner of Nassau Street and Charlton Street. The site is currently built out at 93% coverage, as you can see from this aerial photo, uh, with three street-facing Victorian-style buildings. Interior to the site is a detached, single-story office service use building, number three in this pic image. Um, vehicular parking for the present uses. Access to the property is via three driveways, two on Charlton, and I'm using my cursor to kind of indicate where they're at now, and one on Nassau that occurs here next to building number one on the image. The surrounding properties, with the exception of a single small residential lot, which is located back in this area, kind of behind the number three on the image, um, are owned by Princeton University, including several buildings and associated parking up in the upper right of the, the property from that image. These properties, the properties in question here are not within a historic district, but fall within the suggested Anderson Town Historic District under the former Princeton Borough Historic Preservation Plan element of the Princeton Community Master Plan. The application proposes to demolish the interior one-stere, one-story rear office building, number three, as well as an interior extending brick office portion of the two-story Nassau Street-facing building, number two in the image here. The vacated interior space is where a new apartment building will be constructed. I'm going to switch images here now. This is a rendering that is also included in the, online on the, the application package. Um, it's labeled site plan rendering. Uh, the site will be further improved, so the, the vacated interior space is where the new apartment building will be constructed with a lobby and ground-level parking for 33 of 38 parking stalls, which will be beneath the building. So the white outline is the new building here. And the parking is kind of showing the ground-level parking underneath the building and the access driveways, as you can now see. So this Nassau Street is now on the left. Um, the site will be further improved with multiple little courtyards, landscape areas, and conversion of some of the existing gravel parking to landscape buffer in the adjoining residences. This, this area here, that, on the right side of the image, is currently a gravel parking lot, and that'll be, the gravel will be removed and a buffer will be installed. Um, bicycle parking and facilities proposed in excess of code standards. The upper floors of the new building will include 36 market rate and nine affordable residential apartments. Since the impervious coverage will be reduced with reconstruction from the current 93% to below 90%, new stormwater management is not required. Runoff will continue to the existing municipal street system. Three, the three street-facing buildings, the one on Nassau, that was number one, if you recall, and the two on Charlton, the one here that I'm circling in the middle, and this one here, so that's 911 and 13 Charlton. Uh, they will be preserved, they'll remain, with some modifications to, uh, the building at number 13. The new apartment building will be sufficiently set back from the streets, and thus will be screened by retaining the street-facing buildings. The three present tax lots will be consolidated into a single lot. Pro, proposed development will be compliant with all, with the majority of the AHO1 bulk standards, with the exception of two requested variances. First is for building height. The height of 54 feet 10 inches is proposed, while 50 foot is permitted. The second is for landscape buffer offset, which is 3.9 inches is proposed versus 15 feet. That occurs here for these two parking stalls that you can see on the right side of the image. Um, so it's not for the full length, it's only for the, the two parking stalls. The Municipal Traffic Engineer Review offers a detailed review and analysis of the proposed vehicular circulation and parking, including the EV parking. Uh, the Fire Marshal Report presents some significant concern regarding potential challenges and concern that seem to be of critical importance to resolve. It's by understanding the applicant has met with the Fire Marshal and has, has come to a resolution on those items, and they can present that hopefully in testimony this evening. Uh, the staff engineering, zoning, and historic preservation reports offer a more detailed description of the zoning requirements, as well as more detailed description, commentary, and questions regarding each existing building, the neighborhood context, and present residential or commercial uses. These reports also offer several potential plan modifications or conditions of approval. The applicant should offer a detailed description of the rationale regarding the variances, as, and as compellingly presented in the, um, application narratives, I might say. Uh, the testimony should also be provide, be provided regarding the questions and suggestions for plan modification in the reports. Uh, it's my analysis that the, the applicant's efforts to consolidate these properties and their commitment to invest in the community to efficiently redevelop the interior of the site with a desirable expansion of diverse market and affordable housing opportunities in a location that is highly walkable to the downtown retail and employment center, as well as public transportation options, is very commendable. Although the site is quite compact, the preservation of some existing structures, along with the construction of a new structure that'll include more sustainable energy and building materials and features, presents desirable green building qualities. The combination of these community benefits would seem to outweigh any potential detriments presented by the requested variances. It is noted that the Environmental Commission Report also offers some additional suggestions to further advance green building sustainability and climate action goals for the applicant's consideration. Regarding site development and landscape architecture, um, as in previously indicated, the staff reports have raised some significant questions and concerns. The, the, I don't mean to overplay those, the significant one was the Fire Marshal, which I think they've resolved. They should show that adequate emergency access and navigation of the site can occur. Uh, pedestrian access from Nassau and Charlton Street should be reviewed. Uh, there is a, I had a question. If you look on the cursor, number thirteen Charlton, there is an existing side porch here uh, with access to the building, a door in the building, and it looks to me like that porch is coming off, and there'll be a parking stall right there, and I'm not sure how they will, if that building's gonna be modified to eliminate that door, or if there's a a discrepancy there as to whether access to the building can remain. So that's something they should discuss and resolve, show how they can resolve that. Uh, there was also some concern about some of the parking stalls being able to get in and out of these parking stalls in this corner, I believe, relative to, uh, adjacent parking stalls, being able to turn. And the applicant has indicated that they can provide some testimony showing how that with a multi-point turn, you can get in and out of those stalls. The applicant is also asked to describe the, the various design elements, furnishings, and materials proposed for the small outdoor space, space to be constructed, um, in this area here uh, behind the Blue Victorian Building on Nassau Street. That there's a, kind of an outdoor plaza space here at ground level, and then there's also a space here at the building lobby entrance underneath the building, in the, kind of the parking deck area. Uh, there are existing trees on the site. Seventeen existing trees have been shown. Six of them are street trees along Charlton. It suggested that the Shade Tree Commission should be consulted to review those trees and uh, if any pruning or anything is necessary for those trees or replacement. Uh, there are some trees at the back of the site, uh, by the, in the buffer, that they've, they want to try and save those trees, and I suggest that, that the, the town arbor should be review those trees to see if they're viable. If they're not viable, maybe they should be removed i- in lieu of improved buffer planting, new planting. Um, and those, those could be conditions of approval or, um, analysis. The, uh, landscape architectural design includes some decorative pavements and furnishings and low-level plantings in the areas that we, I indicated before. Along the southern property-bound common with the adjacent residential homes and university buildings that front upon William Street, that's these over here on the right side of the image, uh, two parking stalls were encroached, as I knew previously indicated. The planting within this buffer will consist of twelve upright evergreen trees and some low-level shrubs. As noted above, further analysis, the existing trees may be appropriate here. It is noted that in some of these locations, these are garages or walls at the back of the site. Um, so it's, it's, it's not so much that these are exposed directly to private space. This is the university parking lot down in this area here on the bottom right of the image. Um, and then the final comment was that the plant list should be augmented to have some more size specifications. And so that's, that's my report. If there's any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Any questions for Mr. Dobremilsky? Uh, Mr. Cohen?
Um, I just wonder whether you could clear up in reviewing the report from the Shade Tree Commission, they indicated, I think that virtually all of the existing trees were to be removed. I thought in your report, almost all of the existing trees were to be preserved according to the plan. Can you clear up that discrepancy?
Um, I, I, I believe it on the plans, it shows the trees in this area to be preserved. There's, there's only, what did I say? There's, um, five of the, so they, they were showing seventeen trees. Six of them are street trees along Charlton. Uh, five of them are trees that are off-site. They're actually on the university property in this location here on the left, and then there's another five trees located in this area back here. Um, the-
We're not seeing this area back here.
Oh, I'm sorry. You know what? I'm not sharing my screen anymore. Sorry.
But we'll, we'll just make sure that we get the applicant to testify, uh, about which trees, if any, are removed and what the tree plan is.
Yeah, and right.
I mean, I, I'm-
They can comment on.
Yeah.
I mean, maybe I misunderstood the Shade Tree Report, but it showed like sixteen trees to be removed and requiring replacement.
Yeah, I'll, I'll review the report while they're testifying, and if we need to come back to it, I'll, to have a better feel for exactly what it said.
Thanks.
Great. Yeah, thanks for raising that. Any other questions for Dan Dobremilsky? Anything from any of the rest of our, um, esteemed professionals? Any, any things you want to call out or red flags, anything? So, and, uh, Thomas Barton has a little hand next to his name, but I don't think that that's a raised hand. I think that's, I think that's just... Okay, I'm, I'm not gonna treat it as a raised hand.
Uh, I don't see it.
Oh.
It might be your curse, it might be your curse.
Yes, it is. Sorry about that. What's? Yeah, odd. Okay, sorry. Um, Mr. Letizia, why don't you save me from myself here?
Be happy to, Ms. Wilson. Uh, good evening, Tom Letizia, attorney with Troutman Pepper, Hamilton Sanders, representing Nassau 195 LLC, the owner and the applicant in this, uh, site plan application for redevelopment of its property along Nassau Street and Charlton Street. As was, uh, noted by Mr. Dobremilsky, we will be presenting a proposed re- redevelopment of an approximately zero-point-six acre site near the southwest corner of the intersection of Nassau and Charlton. The subject property is identified as block forty-seven oh one, lots twenty-three, twenty-six, and twenty-seven, and with a street address of one-ninety-five Nassau, nine-eleven Charlton, and thirteen Charlton Street. As was, uh, described by Mr. Dobremilsky, the property is in the recently established Affordable Housing Overlay AHO-dash-one zone. And the development is, uh, designed in accordance with the standards of that zone, except for those two, uh, exceptions that Mr. Dobremilsky noted. And as the board well knows, the overlay zone was put in place by a governing body to incentivize redevelopment consisting of multifamily housing within, with an affordable component, along with commercial uses, to reinforce first the development pattern along Nassau Street, where it is highly walkable to the downtown retail and employment centers, and also close to public transit, transit options. So as is indicated, uh, in our application, we propose to, to consolidate the three lots and redevelop the interior of the site with the construction of forty-five new residential apartments, nine of which will be set aside for affordable uh, units, which, uh, while retaining all of the existing street-facing, uh, buildings, which are occupied today by retail, residential, and, uh, office uses. Uh, thus, the plan carries out the objectives intended by the overlay zone. In addition to site plan, uh, we have requested two, uh, variances, as Mr. Dobremilsky described. Uh, these are classified as flexible C variances. Uh, one is the building height, and the other is the landscape buffer. Uh, we, we have requested a design waiver, uh, for the width of the drive aisles in the, uh, parking podium, and we will explain, uh, why we think, uh, that waiver is necessary and the justification for it. Uh, and then this is really a technical, uh, request. We are also asking for a de minimis exception approval from the number of parking spaces required under the Residential Site Improvement Standards, or RSIS. If the RSIS parking requirement was applied to this site, it would require, uh, eighty-eight spaces. Uh, your ordinance has a much lower standard. Uh, we are proposing thirty-eight parking spaces, which again is consistent with your ordinances, and we think is appropriate, given the site's, uh, walkability, bicycle access, and its proximity to the transit options. And we will provide testimony, uh, on this, uh, item. As you will hear, uh, also this evening, the applicant intends to incorporate a number of sustainability and green building measures to reduce the project's urban footprint over the long term. I believe you will find from the presentation tonight that the applicant is serious about including green initiatives, uh, in the development. Uh, with that said, we, uh, submitted a letter dated September thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two, addressing all comments set forth in the review memos issued as of that date. I trust the board and staff have received, uh, copies of that letter. Our response letter and the testimony, uh, will show that we have agreed to nearly all of the recommendations. There's just a few, a couple items that we have, we do not agree with, uh, obviously respectfully, and our reasons are set forth in that letter, and I ask that, that our letter be made part of the record. Uh, I'm sure you, uh, have all received a, a letter from Christopher DeGrigio, who represents, uh, Princeton University. Uh, he set forth certain concerns, uh, in that letter. Uh, I can report to the board that we have had discussions, uh, with Mr. DeGrigio and his client, and we believe we have, uh, resolved, uh, those concerns and will uh, present the details, uh, of that in our, uh, testimony. Uh, so with that, uh, Mrs. Wilson, we're ready to present, uh, again, I always ask this, I'm not sure, um, we'll give you a permission, but we'd like to go through the entire presentation, but uh, if you want to ask questions after each witness, obviously, uh, we'll abide by that as well.
Yeah, well, I will, um, I'll ask if board members, uh, have questions after each, um, after each person testifies. Um, and as I've said in the opening statement, um, w- we give members the public opportunity to question the witnesses too, but not to make general comments at that time. So, um, you try to be, you know, um, you know, careful about that. So shall we get all of your witnesses, uh, sworn in at once?
Sure, we could do that.
Maybe, uh, all of your witnesses can turn on your, your videos. Mr. Muller will spare you in en masse, and then Mr. Letizia, you can call on people one at a time so that they can say and spell their name.
Great.
If you could, if you could raise your right hand, um, do you swear or affirm the testimony about to give be the truth?
I do.
I do.
So it's one or affirm. Tom, if you could circle around everybody who has just been sworn in, give their full names.
Well, we'll start with, uh, Jeffrey Albert. Um, Mr. Albert, can you please, uh, state your full name and business address, please?
Yes, uh, my name is Jeffrey Albert, A-L-B-E-R-T, and, uh, my business address is nineteen Longview Drive in Princeton.
And, uh, Paul Winters?
Good evening. Yes, Paul Winters, W-I-N-T-E-R-S. I'm with Bowman Consulting. Our address is fifty-four Horsell Road in Cedar Knolls, New Jersey.
Uh, John McCormick?
Good evening, everyone. John McCormick. I know it says James underneath my name, but I am in fact John. Um, I am a principal with Dynamic Traffic. Our address nineteen oh four Main Street in Lake Como.
Uh, Thomas Barton? Uh, you're on mute, uh, Tom.
You're on mute.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. Thomas, middle initial C, Barton. Uh, I am, um, principal with TCB Three Consultancy LLC located at nine oh two Twickenham Road, Media, Pennsylvania.
And finally, uh, William Hamilton.
Uh, good evening. I'm Bill Hamilton. I'm also with Bowman Consulting, fifty-four Horsell Road, Cedar Knolls, New Jersey.
Thank you. So, uh, we will, uh, begin with, uh, Mr. Albert.
Yes, thank you. Um, we are very excited to be able to present to you our, um, our proposal.
Sir Albert, I, I'm sorry to interrupt, um. Oh, I guess, are, are, are you the, do we need?
I was gonna ask-
Qualify you?
I was gonna ask Mr. Albert to identify his relationship.
I, I, I was just about to do that.
I'm, I'm sorry to jump the gun. Thank you. Go right ahead.
That's all right. I, I am, I am, excuse me, I'm one of the owners, and I'm one of the developers of one-ninety-five Nassau Street. Uh, I and the ownership team are all long-term residents of Princeton. We have a, a genuine stake in the community. We are long-term owners, as well as long-term residents. And our long-term perspective informs all of our decisions, everything from choices of materials to, um, uh, to just about everything that, that, that is a part of our design. We do take our responsibility to the community very seriously. We've tried, um, hard here to actualize Princeton's vision for this area, and in particular, this zone. Um, density in an appropriate location, creating the need for affordable housing, maintaining the streetscape, um, and taking sustainability very seriously. We have, um, in this process, we benefited greatly from the staff comments and direction. We've been able to meet with every single one of the reviewing, um, uh, parties, and we're grateful for the, for our pre-hearing meetings with all of them. Uh, we hope the board is, uh, pleased with our efforts, and we look forward to answering all of your concerns. Uh, and I'd like to, um, to fill in a little bit of the blanks that Mr. Dobremilsky had in introducing the existing context of, of our site, so. So, um, this is a, this is a slide that you've seen already, uh, showing the components.
Um, I'm sorry, just for the, uh, make the record clear. Uh, so we're gonna be presenting, uh, a number of photos. I, I don't recall the number of sheets, but why don't we just call this set of slides, uh, A1?
Yep. Right, good.
Okay.
Thanks.
And I'm gonna go, I'm gonna go through these very quickly, since, uh, Mr. Dobremilsky did a, an excellent job setting the context, but I just wanted to fill in a, a few of the blanks. All the components you've already been introduced to. Nassau Street is at the lower right-hand, uh, corner of the upper slide, Charlton Street, uh, on the left-hand side. Um, and it's point-six-one acres, as you've been told before. The, the number one building, uh, is the Blue Victorian Building, uh, on Nassau Street, uh, which has the address of one-ninety-five Nassau. It also has a companion- It also has a companion next to it, which is the brick building. That's number two on the right-hand, lower right-hand side of your, of the image. That building is brick as it's, as it faces Nassau Street and extends farther into the site. You'll see a little. Bit, a little bit better image as it comes about. The third, number three building is a one-story office that's in the, it's the very rear of the building. And then there are two, the rear of the site rather. And then there are two buildings on Charlton Street. Nine eleven and thirteen, which are represented by four and five on this sheet. If I could just move up the slide. This is, these are two images of the Blue Victorian Building and the, and its brick building companion. Again, both, all. One ninety five Nassau Street. This is a building that's, should be familiar with a lot of people in Princeton. If you look at the left side of the. Of that street view on the upper image, that is the entrance today between the two existing buildings. The, the sidewalk view on the lower image is looking, looking west on, on the Nassau Street sidewalk. And then this is, if you were to drive in that drive aisle that I just described from Nassau Street. You would see the upper image here. That, this is the site interior. The projection of that two-story brick building is on the right-hand side. We affectionately call that the motel. The building at the rear is the office building, the one-story office building. And then the image below is the same, is the same site seen from the rear. So seen from the, from the one-story office building looking toward Nassau Street. With the two-story motel building on the left and the Blue Victorian Building straight ahead. And these, these last images are the buildings on Charlton Street. Nine eleven Charlton is in the upper image. The existing entrance to the site is on the right-hand side of that building. And you can see it paved there. The lower building, which is thirteen Charlton Street. Also has an entrance, but that entrance does not, does not extend into the site proper today. It, it only serves thirteen Charlton Street. So those are the, that's the, those are the existing site conditions. We're excited to show you our proposal and how we hope to make this entire location far better.
I have no further questions of Mr. Albert.
Any quick questions for Mr. Albert from board members? Okay, um, thank you, Mr. Albert. This is really interesting project. Mr. Letizia, who's next?
I now call. Who is next? I forget.
Paul Winters.
Paul Winters, I'm sorry, yes.
Subtly waving, just a reminder, yes. Good evening, everybody.
Paul, let's begin by having you provide the board with your educational professional background, please.
Sure thing, yes. I hold a Bachelor of Science degree in Civil and Environmental Engineering from Rutgers University. I'm a New Jersey professional engineer. My license is in good standing. I have over twenty years of experience as a consulting engineer. And I've previously been qualified to offer professional testimony in several municipalities. Including Morristown, Persippany, Troy Hills, Down Brook, New Brunswick, South Brunswick, Trenton, and other jurisdictions.
I'm sure I. We accept your qualifications. Thank you.
Thank you.
So Paul. Let's begin by just quickly familiar, providing some overview of the area. Around this property, which has already basically been covered by Mr.
Yes, and I will get very brief. I'm gonna share my screen here because we have an exhibit, which I believe Mr. Dobremilsky might have shown. But I'll, I'll be brief, just to touch on a few things. Hopefully everyone can see this exhibit, which we'll need to assign a number two in a moment. This is titled Existing Conditions Aerial. And.
Prepared by your office.
This is prepared by our office dated September twenty eighth, twenty twenty two. And what this is depicting is an aerial imagery. Taken of the site and the surrounding area, the site, which has been established already, is this area. In red outline right here.
All right, we'll mark this A two.
A two, thank you. And just for the sake of orienting where we are and what we'll be talking about when we get to the proposed conditions momentarily. One ninety five Nassau's address is right here. You see Nassau Street on the left side of the screen, also is known as State Highway twenty seven. And on the. This side of the property, the, I guess, the planned north side, although in this case, north actually happens to be on the left side of the page for reference. This is Charlton Street and Municipal Road, which is one-way and traffic moves in the direction moving away from Nassau Street towards the right. And I just wanted to briefly orient ourselves to surrounding uses. We have the Princeton University Lewis Center for the Arts at the bottom of our screen. To the right of our property are, is the residential zone. There's some houses at front on William Street over here. On the, the upper side of the site is Charlton Street. And beyond that, we have a number of houses, some of which do have first-floor office uses, as I understand. But mostly residential. At the northeast corner of our property up here, there's two existing buildings which are Princeton University-owned. And. On the left side of the site on this plan is Nassau Street. Beyond that, we have. Retail, commercial uses, as well as some second-floor residences in the buildings on Nassau Street. And over here, we have Saint Paul's Church. I think we've already well-established what's on the site. So in the interest of the board's time, I'd like to. Move on and speak about our proposed conditions for which I have a second exhibit. Let me see, if I just click over to this, can everybody see a new exhibit, which will also need to assign a number titled Site Plan Rendering?
Yes, we see it.
Good. It's always good when the technology cooperates. Should we call this A dash three?
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
And what is the date of this?
So this is also dated September twenty eighth, twenty twenty two, titled Site Plan Rendering. And similar to the other image we saw, we're using the same background aerial imagery for the perimeter of the site. And we've taken a combination of our site plan drawing and our landscape plan and presented a color rendering of what that would look like. Within those site limits, that same red dashed line references the property line. So what you'll see here is this plan depicts a proposed forty-five unit building right here with a white outline. This is the residential apartment building that will be constructed over ground-level parking. And you also see other related site improvements on this plan. The construction, construction of this building will retain existing buildings, as was mentioned earlier, along Nassau Street. And Charlton Street, a portion of the, the rear portion of the brick building fronting on Nassau will be removed for construction of this as well as the existing one-story. Building that contains office uses interior to the site and much of the improved parking areas will be replaced by this building and the new parking level. This building will include nine affordable units with the balance being market rate units. A compliant number of parking spaces are provided per the municipal requirements, which includes the provision of ADA and electric vehicle parking spaces. Thirty-eight total spaces are proposed. You see, we have two ADA spaces prominently depicted here. There are at least three right now. Compact spaces depicted on this plan. They're not labeled on here, but they are labeled in the site plans as submitted. As well as six electric vehicle parking spaces that are going to be provided for inside the, the building in this area, one of which will. Address the accessibility requirement of those. And two more spaces will be provided in this area where we have parking that tucks under this part of the building here. I do want to note that in addition to providing these six vehicle spaces in accordance with the applicable regulations. The applicant is intending to pre-wire the balance of spaces inside the building for future. Conversion to electric vehicle compatibility for, for future charging purposes. The, the proposed parking, which as you can see is primarily under the building, with the exception of two spaces along this driveway here. Will be screened either by landscaping, which is prominently being done on the right side of this drawing. In areas where we are less fortunate with space to do landscaping, we're going to be providing either a combination of screening or solid walls in various parts of this garage, which. Will be a little easier to see during the architectural testimony. Regarding the two parking spaces up here and to address an item Mr. Dobremilsky mentioned earlier, there is an intention to remove. A porch in this area to maximize the use of this area for some parking spaces. It's intended to reconfigure the, the access for this building. There are already additional doors along the front and the rear of this building. So the applicant has evaluated and determined they can remove the, the door and the porch here with no detriment to what they intend to continue to do with this building, which is residential use. So let me discuss site circulation, which is intending to utilize existing driveway locations, which, which helps. Is necessary in part because we're trying to preserve existing buildings, which we are doing. So with that, we are however, going to reconfigure the traffic patterns to better facilitate access to the property. And to improve the safety and predictability of circulation by changing some of the existing two-way driveways here to serve as one-way traffic only. Existing curb openings are being retained, as I mentioned, two on Charlton Street and the one on Nassau Street. The site driveway adjacent to nine dash eleven Charlton will also continue to provide a shared access to one ninety nine Nassau Street. Which, which is a Princeton-owned property. So that will continue as it does in the current condition. And while we're discussing this area of the site, we're also going to continue to ensure that we provide a clear delineation between this one driveway we have here. And the adjacent property, we're proposing a fence to ensure that we're keeping our traffic flow separate from the adjacent property. Also, on the topic of circulation, it was mentioned by Mr. Letizia that there is a. Design waiver that is necessary, which I do want to just identify and it'll be talked about a little bit more in the traffic testimony. There is an internal with the building, there is a two-way. Driveway that allows access to the parking inside. Typically, for municipal requirements, that would need to be a minimum of twenty-four feet in width. And we're proposing twenty-two feet in width for that. So which, which will require us to request a design waiver for this deficiency. In this instance, a reduced drive aisle width is, is commonly used in such applications for interior to buildings for residential uses, especially in urban settings. As this parking will serve residential users, users who will be familiar with the parking configuration, this is employed in similar applications. And more will be discussed about that through this evening's testimony. As is typical of properties in developed town centers, loading, trash service and deliveries can be facilitated via on-street means. Delivery service vehicles are also expected to be made off-street via our site driveways, which are designed to accommodate typical delivery service vehicle access. Our office also met with the Princeton Emergency Services Personnel. To discuss emergency vehicle access and ensure we can address their concerns. And we've confirmed with, with them that the site can facilitate the emergency vehicle access that they would want to have in place to, to their satisfaction. In addition to vehicular access, pedestrian access is going to be improved as a result of this project. In the current condition. There's no dedicated sidewalk access to reach the interior of this property. Access is typically through the driveways, but we are providing a dedicated pedestrian way to reach the, the main entrance of the building here by providing a crosswalk. As well as a new sidewalk that will connect to the nearest right-of-way at Charlton Street here to help facilitate pedestrian access and make that a little safer than the current condition. We're also happy to report that the site provides bicycle parking, which exceeds the requirements that the municipality has. For both categories of short-term and long-term. For short-term parking, we actually have that provided in two separate areas. One on the, the north side or the left side of the building here, which will provide a number of spaces. That's adjacent to a stair tower that, that provides residents direct access to the building. And on the opposite end of the building, we also are providing bicycle parking here. So we, we have that. Short-term distributed across the site. There will also be a number of long-term spaces, again, above the requirement that'll be provided inside of the building. At the ground level and basement level of the building. With the proposed improvements, we actually had an opportunity to decrease the overall impervious cover on the site. As you can see, we've carved out some green space here. One, one item I want to discuss also is tree removals. There was a question about that earlier and I do want to clarify that there is only one tree that is being proposed to be removed as part of this application. Which happens to fall directly in the footprint of this building. There's a requirement that we provide two replacement trees. We are proposing thirteen replacement trees. At a minimum. So we're going to be addressing the tree replacement requirement. As I mentioned, we are reducing impervious cover. And in addition to. Providing a bit of buffer planting on this side, we're also going to be providing some green space on this side of the building, which is currently a parking area. We were able to accommodate that in the vicinity of the bicycle parking and where there's some egress doors to the existing and the proposed building. We're also providing a couple of small benches in this area. So it gives us a little opportunity outside of the stair access to, to. Do something better than just have, have more pavement. So we've maximized our opportunities where we can with our landscape design. Oh, in review of the reports of the Shade Tree Commission and. The board's landscape architecture consultant, Mr. Dobremilsky and whoever else has commented on, on the planting selections. The applicant is amenable to update the planting schedule to maximize the use of native species where practical to be. In general conformance with the recommendations and municipal guidelines. So we have an opportunity to do that and surely we'll be happy to do that as a condition of any approval granted by the board this evening. I do want to speak about a matter that involves a variance and that has to do with the requirement. In the AH O dash one zone for a fifteen-foot landscape buffer to residential zones. We have residential zone to the right side of this property here. We include in our plan two parking spaces in this area which extend into this buffer. And while we maintain the fifteen feet here, we're seeking variance relief to have a minimum three-point-seven foot. Set back at this corner and it's slightly more of five feet at this corner over here. So we're seeking a variance for this encroachment. We do want to note with this encroachment, it is limited to only these two parking spaces, which is about eighteen feet. For the balance of this side of the building, we are satisfying the fifteen-foot setback for planted buffer, which is an additional. Where, where we only have eighteen feet here, this is approximately seventy feet where we're meeting that. Despite this encroachment, this also is an improvement over the existing condition as this entire area today contains a parking lot that serves the existing. Uses on the property. So we're going to be pulling back those improved surfaces and vegetating those. With the exception of that small area, which is also going to be a little bit further from that property line by, by my measurement. The current one comes up just a few feet short of the property line. Also want to mention that in this area where we have the encroachment. I've reviewed this condition in the field and there's two existing one-story or taller garages at the rear of these two properties, which actually are. Helping to obscure the view of this property from the houses in front. So between that and the additional landscape we're providing. We're also providing a solid six-foot vinyl fence in this corner. Where we don't already have other structures or fences blocking that view. So we, we believe we're, we're taking measures to help mitigate. And improve the condition despite the need for variance for this encroachment. The project will include site lighting. It will be building-mounted lighting. There are no pole-mounted lights proposed. Building-mounted lights will be generally at a low height to limit light spillage and. Will also be dark sky compliant. Per municipal comments received, we are. Amenable certainly to changing to a warmer color spectrum that will specify it on the plans for those fixtures and will also be. More than happy to submit a lighting design to address interior of the building. The submitted plans included the exterior. And we'll ensure that any spillage issues that were, were picked up in that review will be addressed with some adjustments. And we'll ensure that any spillage issues that were were picked up in that review will be addressed with some adjustments to that design. The building will have one sod-mounted sign, which is going to depict the address number. It'll be a one-nine-five, and you'll see that in the architect's testimony. I just want to note this sign will comply with the municipal requirements for size, location, and illumination. There was a comment we received about the illumination, and that will be addressed in in the final updates made to this plan, again, as condition of any approval granted. This new building will require some new utility services. We'll be pulling new services from Charlton Street or Nassau Street as deemed appropriate and required by the utility owners, including the water service, sanitary sewer, electric, and telecommunications. A new natural gas service is not proposed, as the building will use all electric appliances and systems. So I wanted to point that out. Regards to stormwater, as I noted, we we're happy to report we're reducing impervious cover on this project. We're reducing it by approximately eleven hundred square feet, as noted in the stormwater report submitted for the project. And we're posing a total disturbance of only point four-three acres. Based upon this, the project is not meet the definition of either a major development or minor development per the Princeton ordinances, and it also is exempt from the D P Stormwater Management Rules. And best of all, the reduction of previous cover is reducing total runoff from the site. So we have the benefit of that. Additionally, we are providing some, excuse me. In addition to the reduction of impervious cover, we are also going to be providing some surface drains just to help maintain and continue the existing drainage patterns. We're proposing rain barrels to pick up roof runoff and help minimize and mitigate the runoff rates from the site by use of those. And overall, with the reduction of impervious cover, reduce runoff from vehicular services, since we're going to maximize the location of those under the building. We believe we'll be significantly reducing the runoff impacts from vehicular surfaces, which is an overall improvement compared to the existing condition, which is all paved lot. Among the reviews of the municipality, we did receive the the environmental commission's review memo. And I just didn't want to briefly identify a number of the environmental conservation elements that we've included in the site plan design. The architect can talk about some additional ones with the building. But in the site side, and some of these I've touched on, was the provision of ample bicycle storage facilities on the site. The provision of the electric vehicle-ready pre-wired spaces throughout the building, the proposed building. The the location of the parking level inside the building footprint provides a number of benefits, some of which I mentioned in terms of the reduction of vehicular impervious coverage and related runoff from that. Instead, it's building roof that will be receiving that rainfall and then passing that to our rain barrels, which are proposed. And we're also minimizing light pollution through the installation of light fixtures that'll be dark sky compliant. Just to touch on the variances, which will be providing additional testimony from our planner later, just for the sake of summary. There's two variances and a municipal design waiver and the RSIS exception, just to note. Firstly, there's a maximum building height requirement of fifty feet permitted where we are seeking a variance for a proposed height of fifty-four-point-eight-three feet. Our project architect and planner will both speak about this variance. There is a minimum landscape buffer to residential zone requirement in the AHO zone, which I spoke about a bit, where fifteen feet is required. And three-point-seven feet is the reduced setback for which we're seeking a variance. And as I noted, I've discussed some of those design measures in site-specific conditions that we we believe help mitigate the impacts of that encroachment in support of this variance, and our planner will also speak about this in a little bit. I mentioned the the one design waiver from Princeton's standards, which is for the providing a twenty-two-foot-wide drive aisle where a twenty-four-foot is required inside the building. And our traffic engineer will also provide some testimony regarding circulation in that area. And and lastly, Mr. Letizia mentioned there is a provision in the residential site improvement standards for which we're seeking a diminutive exception. Their standards would require a higher number of parking spaces for a residential development of eighty-eight, where we propose thirty-eight. We are consistent with the municipal requirements. This this exception is is not uncommon for projects located in developed town centers, which offer greater opportunities for walkability and bicycle access in close proximity to mass transportation. In this case, the municipal requirements are more reflective of local site conditions than the RSIS, and since we're complying with those requirements, we believe we would provide adequate parking such that this exception could easily be granted. Again, our planner will cover more on these variances as well as our other professionals. Just to restate something I think we've mentioned both by Mr. Letizia and Mr. Albert. We've had a chance to review board's professionals' comments. We've met with a number of them. And we're we believe confidently we can generally address all their comments, their satisfaction. It was a pleasure to meet with all of them and kind of go through everything. So that is also something I'd like to add. Generally, that concludes my direct testimony. I'm sure if any questions you have, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Winters. I have no further questions of Mr. Winters. He's available for questions from the board in public.
Mr. Cohen has his hand up, and then Mr. O'Donnell.
Thank you, Chair. Just a couple of questions. One related to the question about loading zone, need for a loading zone, and I read the response that you had said that you were going to schedule, you know, moving vans, so therefore no loading zone was required. But I think that deserves a little bit more attention, like where are the moving vans going to park? And, you know, how do you schedule it so that? I mean, if they're going to be obstructing access or egress from the site, how do you schedule it in such a way that it doesn't matter? That so? But let me just ask my other couple of questions, and then you can respond to each of them or all of them. The P E C report, the Environmental Commission, had recommended looking at green roof possibilities as an additional way to help with slowing down stormwater runoff, realizing that it's not a requirement. But I'd like you to address whether that is possible. You know, I I realize that can require some extra depth of structure as well as some extra depth of like planting medium, and you're probably, and I know you're right up against a sort of fifty-five feet in building height, but if you could just address that. And the one other question relates to the change of materials at the parallel those two parallel parking spaces. I think that was an environmental commission suggestion as well, that if you could have a change of materials between the parallel parking spaces and the drive aisle would narrow the apparent width of the drive aisle and sort of help with traffic calming and that kind of thing. So those are my three questions.
Okay. Thank you. I will go through those and see if I can address them. In in terms of the loading and operations, I've had the opportunity to speak with the applicant and and get an understanding of a little bit of how their operations may work, and without overstepping into how operations work. As they will have the chance to manage the site, they're they would have the chance to schedule bigger deliveries that would be more concerning for for handling in these cases. And if if a need arose to get a vehicle in a position to get more direct access, one benefit of our layout is we have we have two means of egress either through Nassau Street or through Charlton Street. So if if we need to encumber either for an operation, we haven't totally blocked off the site. We're we're hopefully may not have to do that as often, though, since we do have one benefit of this location. We've, having been to the site, observed that we have a full distance between parking spaces on Charlton Street of sixty feet from where where you see the cursor here to the next space that does include the driveway opening. But having that large of an area provides an opportunity where shorter-term loading and fast-loading operations may be able to take place right in this area. That is, as I mentioned, not uncommon in in town center urban settings. I'm sure that's how operations are happening today. Because that's, you know, delivery services are frequent, and so there's an availability for that. There's also at least thirty feet in the area in front of this other driveway. So there's there's options that will be probably preferable for for that. Our our traffic consultant may have more to add on to that, but that's that was our initial thought on that. As I mentioned, delivery vehicles, there's there's no shortage of of Amazon deliveries in this day and age. We're anticipating that they they do have the the means to come through the site. If they so choose, or they may also decide to to use the street if they think it's quicker. Those are less in our control, but for for bigger loading operations, the applicant has the opportunity to help schedule those such as move-ins.
Yeah, may I just jump in here for one second if I could answer the some of the operational questions that regarding move-ins? We need to schedule move-ins under any circumstances. We have a single elevator. Move-ins will have to be scheduled by time and by place. We have been very successful in other locations with blocking out a single parking space and requiring that move-ins are by van and not by large, you know, tractor-trailer-type moving vans. These are, you know, these are apartments. They're not, you know, five thousand square foot homes. They generally have no problem in moving through vans, which are which can easily navigate the site. But I just want to be clear that scheduling move-ins is 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 a fact of life with these kinds of communities, particularly with a single with a single elevator. And that's done, you know, that's done routinely and very successfully.
Sure. I just know with some of our other housing developments, they have provided a dedicated loading space for the move-ins. So that's part of why I had the question.
No, understood.
Regarding your your other two questions, Mr. Cohen. Regarding the green roof question, I I may I may want to defer that more to our our project architects and and the applicant to maybe even speak about a little bit. It's more of a building thing. So I will I'll respectfully let let them address that. I think they would do a better job to speak to that. And regarding the parking question, for these two spaces here, yes, we did see the comment suggesting a different surface be used to to set that off differently, and that's what we're amenable to that change. We can we can accommodate that.
That's a good change. Great.
Mr. O'Donnell.
Thank you. The brick storefront that's right next to one ninety-five, is that part of this property?
Yes.
And will that brick storefront be remaining, or will that be taken down as part of the the motel?
No, that remains.
That remains, okay.
That remains. What what is taken down is the is the is the last forty percent of that building as it projects into the site.
Okay. Thank you very much for that. The parking for the apartments, is that also going to accommodate parking for the three existing structures as well?
The the parking for that building is intended primarily for residential tenants of the site. The the requirements for the parking actually are just specific to that. I'm trying to think if we had anything else specific to that. I'm just looking at my calculations. Bear with me.
From a municipal requirement standpoint, there's no there's no requirement for the for parking there.
That was my recollection. Thank you.
For the for the for the the less ease, they are they are permitted to park on-site. And so, you know, we we hope from an operational standpoint to take advantage of, you know, of a shared parking kind of idea where when the residents are are out and and at their employment, to the extent that they're driving, that that would leave space open for for some of the commercial tenants. But there's there's not a requirement.
Okay, so you so you're saying that they are according, there's no municipal requirement to include those three buildings as part of the parking for the site?
That's right.
It's interesting. And just one more question, the the white outline, I assume that's the outline of the building itself. And those two parking spaces on the south end, they're going to extend beyond the
That's right.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. Okay, that's that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Oh, and Mr. Cohen again?
Thanks. Yeah, I thought of two other questions I had that I forgot to jot down. One has to do with where is the location of the partial basement? I know that's where the bike parking is is happening, but the the architectural plan I reviewed didn't really indicate under what portion of the building that's located.
My my reaction is to also want to defer to the architect unless Mr. Albert wants to jump in, but I don't want to guess wrong, because I've been paying more attention to the site than the building.
It's it's generally under the under the parking podium. But I think the architect will be able to describe that more fully.
Okay. And the other question, this is something that actually frequently comes up, and I I don't think that it was addressed in the staff reports, but what do you imagine as the trash remove trash management process? Because that trash room is really buried pretty deep in the parking area, and I'm assuming garbage trucks cannot drive into the the, you know, the parking deck, so.
The and that that's a a great question, and it's one we spent a bit of time talking about, because I wanted to ensure the we could answer that one. The the trash room is located here on the site. We provided a means to, it's going to be rollouts, I should say that first. So we have a means to get those rollouts through this area to get to the drive aisle. Private hauler is going to be used, which will be contracted with the with the owners. And they they will manage that, which which is good in the means, because then they have control over that operation to some extent. But we're we're anticipating, and I would anticipate more than likely, they will probably want to roll those directly out to the right-of-way and pick them up. I've pressed our applicant on this a bit, and they've spoken with me and said that they these operations happen very quickly, and I can let them speak more about that if you want to hear more, but the the trash removal people are in the business of moving quickly. So they they show up, they get what they need to, and put it back and and carry on their way. There there is an area along Nassau, which if they choose to do that on the right-of-way in in the cartway here, is not parking. So that's available for that. If they want to push out another driveway, that's an option, but I would anticipate it'll probably happen from this direction out.
Yeah, I, okay, thanks for the answer. My gut reaction is that it will work better if it's picked up in the driveway, you know, to have the the garbage truck stop right by that landscape area, just because no matter how fast the trash haulers move, you know, if they've got sixty or eighty feet to roll several containers, I I'm worried about a garbage truck parked in that part of Nassau Street.
I can tell you, Mr. Cohen, what happens on the building up the street at two fifty-three Nassau Street, which is very likely to be similar. And that is that the garbage truck actually backs into the drive aisle. The containers are taken off, they're rolled off, they're put in, and they and they they're on their way. That whole process is about forty-five seconds because I've timed it.
Yeah, great. I mean, I that's to have it in the drive aisle is where I'd like to see it.
It does block the drive aisle for that period of time, for that minute or so. But it's that also happens, by the way, at the municipal garage. It happens exactly the same way. The garage exit is blocked for a period of time when the roll-offs are being taken off. So, you know, it's a common occurrence.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Tim Quinn?
Thank you, Madam Chair. My question relates to the to the house that faces on Charlton with the side porch that's being demolished. Yes, thank you, that area. How many parking spaces are going to be there? Is that two spaces or?
That that is two spaces proposed and it's it does, I'll be honest, in this image, it does get a little lost in the pavers here. We're going to be picking a different paver, so that way it's. One pattern here and a different pattern there at the driveway.
My concern is with access to the rear of that since it's it's removing an access to that house. And you said that there are front and rear access to that, and I wonder how that works with cars. Parked there. I I guess you have to walk around the cars, but would there be? Perhaps striping between the two spots that would. Let people know not to park near the access to the rear of that building?
We do have some striping and one 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 plus about these Zoom meetings, I could zoom a little bit, quite literally zoom. And show we we have a striped out area here, which is in the area behind this parking spot that. You know, when when we delineate parallel, we we make them a little bit longer and try and leave some space. These are actually striped out as twenty-two feet, which is a little bit longer. But with that, there's there's an area reserved here and we're actually depicting a new fence with a gate here to. Have an area that they can get access to the rear of that building. Just to clarify, there will be no doors on this side of the building. When the improvements are made to the house and there is a front door, there is a rear door here. And I'm going to put the applicant on the spot and ask him because I think there is, but I don't recall if there's another door on this side of the building.
There is, but the but the access really is 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 on the front at Charlton Street.
Okay, uh, thank you, and I forgive me if I missed this during the presentation, but. Those parking spots are for the apartments or they're for. The other residences that are included in this on the this overall consolidated lot.
The 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 parking, the parking we're providing accounts for all residents, including two units in that building today. So those residents can park here if they choose to or in any of the available parking spaces on the site.
And I usually ask this with the infill. Infill projects, but the the there will be no dedicated spaces for guest parking, so. If I'm living in there without a car and I'm having a gathering of friends, there's. None of those spaces are reserved for guests. I'm making an assumption.
That's that's right. Okay, hopefully your guests can walk or or bike there. Or park on the street.
Sure, but not if they live in Philadelphia or New York. I, well, they might take transit, but if they live in, say. Lawrence or Trenton, they're most likely going to be driving. I just, the points well taken. I I hope that they would walk or bike there, but I just wanted to be sure with regard to the spaces. There won't be any spaces allocated for guest parking.
No, that's that's correct.
Thank you.
Um, Mr. Chow and then Mr. Berry's had his hand up for a while and then Mr. Bodigheimer. Phil?
Yes, um, you you were just zoomed in. On the egress and ingress for the building and I noticed the alignment is a little tight there. So if you're coming in from Charlton. And then and you're you follow the arrow down on the screen. The the car would have to do a little bit of a jog to enter into the parking lot, and if you have a car coming out of the parking lot. And let's say they're going to the right. The the it seems a little tight there and it seems like it could be better aligned. Because the the car that's coming in to the parking lot. Has to do a little bit of a zigzag and then it has to squeeze the car that's coming out. Up against those, I guess those bushes there where where it curves on the curb. Any thought as to? That alignment there?
Uh, yes, we we did look into that and discuss that a bit with this project. There there are certain limitations we had in this layout. I'm I'm going to defer more to the traffic engineer who's going to talk about circulation a little bit more, but. In in general, one one thing I do want to stress with the layout is it's. These are, these areas are going to be for the residences of the building. This is not a high speed area. We've, we are emphasizing that there is a stop bar here for vehicles before they leave the garage. And go in either direction, so it's it's a lower speed area and this this actually will continue to promote it as a lower speed area, but I. I think I will allow the our traffic engineer to speak a little bit more about that because he could probably cover it a little more thoroughly than I would.
Thanks.
Um, so, Mr. Berry, I see your hand went down. Is that because I called on you or because you didn't mean for your hand to be up?
Uh, actually, it was because, uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, it was actually because Mr. Chow brought up one of the topics I'll be taking with the traffic engineer. But I will be holding.
Now, you're a traffic person, right?
Yes.
Yes, on behalf of the town, so we need to swear you in.
Yeah, if you could raise your hand. Do you swear the testimony about to give will be the truth?
I do.
So sworn in front.
Thank you. Um, yeah, I'm gonna hold the rest of my commentary and questions until the traffic testimony commences. Thank you.
Okay, great. Uh, Mr. Bodigheimer and then Mr. Taylor.
Yeah, I don't really have a question here. It's just, as much as I mean, we've a lot of. You know, design level questions about this project, but I don't think anyone's really addressed. You know, at a summary level that seems like a great project. I mean, it's. Forty-five units in the part of town that we want to where we want to see development. I'm completely untroubled by guest parking issues. At the time that people guess parking is going to happen, there's never a problem. Parking in anywhere around here. I I I've never had a problem parking in this area, you know. And I just don't anticipate that being an issue during, you know, time of of business. Which is, you know, business hours, which is, you know, in this part of the town that time when I think there's a big greater stresses. But at visiting hours is it's a cakewalk to park around here. And, you know, I I I guess I don't know for sure that this is. An element of the town's plan to. Meet affordable housing obligations, but. Uh, I think it's terrific that there's affordable housing provided in this and, I mean, at a top level, I just want to register that. You know, I want there to be a voice at this hearing that says this sounds like a great project and, you know, I'm satisfied that. The, you know, staff can work with the, you know, the applicant on details, but. I'd like somebody to be saying that this is a great project, so anyway.
We've we've tried to say that.
All right, well.
Well, and I appreciate your way of, this is a sort of the pepperum with questions part of the meeting as opposed.
Yeah, I know, but you know.
I appreciate that, Mr. Bodigheimer.
Well taken.
And I don't, yeah, I just don't want anyone to get the feeling that like there's not some kind of like, hey, let's try to figure out a way to get this done and, you know, and not be like, oh, there's so many little things that. It's, you know, it's not, you know, that we don't like it. I like it, so. That's all.
Thank you for your comment and I hope my my need to get through the the granular elements of the testimony I have to give didn't detract from, but it probably did detract from the. Fact that I I do have an enthusiasm for this project. I I think it is. It's opinion, but the the right project in the right place.
Granular is good, though. Granular is is really important. The devil's in the details, as they say. Mr. Taylor? You're on mute right now.
Am I back?
You are.
All right, good. I was so enthusiastic about this project, Mr. Bodigheimer. That this morning I got in the car and I came down to Charlton Street on which I'd never driven and I literally, I walked the project. And I'm as enthusiastic as you are. This is clearly a role model project. Two questions, not the most important, well, one is important. First of all, I noticed. The eighteen nineties houses across the street, there's been limited reference to what if any impact. Doing something this important may have on, what do we call it, the Anderson Historic District? Is there, have we thought about what if any implications there are? Probably none, but. It's it's a surprisingly large area. That's number one. And number two. I took a look at the walkways. And when I think about, I'm thinking like my grandchild, when I think about a fire truck, I think about a ladder truck. Whatever the fire chief may say, obviously, I'm impressed. I trust him. He has the final word. But this is going to be delicate. In my opinion, it can't be otherwise, given the size, the length of a fire truck and what might need to be done. In an emergency situation. So I just wanted to come back to fire in addition to the historic district.
Yes, we we have yet to hear the applicant's testimony on that particular question, but it is, it it will. Certainly come and it's an important thing for us to understand much better. Yeah, so thank you for that. Other questions from board members? I think I had a couple myself. In one of the earlier images, it showed the tree canopy on the right-hand side, the south side of the project. And it showed that canopy. I gather those trees are actually. Uh, the the trunks are on the neighboring property. Is that? Correct? And I guess what my my question really is, is how much does this project? And if this is something that's going to be testified to later on, we I can just hold off and ask the appropriate person, but. Is it going to require, you know, limbing back those trees or or otherwise? How is it going to affect the trees that right now? The canopies of which drape over the south side of this. Of this parcel and where on this image smaller trees or or maybe shrubs are shown. If it's not your question to answer, Mr. Winters, I'm happy to wait. For an answer until it's the appropriate person, but I want somebody to address it.
Uh, no, that's 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 quite all right, Ms. Wilson. I can address that now. We actually did look at that and we've discussed with with the applicant that we we have an opportunity to provide this landscaping. Even with some of those existing trees there, we did identify four or five, five trees on our property line that were. Big enough to incorporate with our tree location plan. There's some smaller ones in this area too, but. The the big ones that are important, we've depicted here and here. And I'm actually jotting down on my my paper copy that I want to make sure we note that some of those trees will need to be. Limbed. I mean, it is important to prune trees regularly and and encourage their growth by ensuring that they're they're maintained. So there'll be an opportunity to improve the health of those trees by doing some select pruning to ensure that. They're not too close to the building, but we did select plantings in this area and I spoke with our landscape designer who worked on this project. That would work with the canopy in this area. This this area is planted as it is in part because of the buffer requirement, but we we felt better about trying to preserve these trees. Rather than clear everything and put buffer planting in, that didn't make any sense to us. Which is why we haven't made this wall-to-wall plants end to end. We have smaller ground covers in this area, but we were trying to maximize the buffer effect of these, so. We we did account for that. Like I said, I'm actually adding a little note to myself that we want to note on our plans that we'll need to limb. Some of those trees and prune them a little bit. I mean, if we don't, it'll be evident when they do the work, but I'd rather be thorough.
Yeah, let letting up could be great. We just want to avoid that, you know, shearing off of one side. That just is just so awful.
I'm going to use pruning, actually, when I when I mark this up instead of limbing because that's it's the right connotation. And while we're on that topic of limbing or pruning, and I'm actually going to use this to segue back to Mr. Taylor's fire comments in a moment. The the trees that are going to be preserved in this area of the site. Some some are offsite, some are onsite right here. Some of those may also be pruned or limbed to help with access in this area. Most of it is generally adequate, but we're we're going to put a note on there because. This is actually the point where we spoke with the fire department about ensuring they can get access with the with the ladder truck that they they specified. We we did review and evaluate. Back to Mr. Taylor's question about access and and thank you for that question. We we had a good meeting with the fire department, emergency services to to kind of go through and and make sure they're satisfied they can get access. We we have the ability for them to back their their ladder truck into this driveway. And we provided Mr. Novak with with that information based on the the specs he gave us, so they could do an aerial setup in this location. We know they can get in other ways too, but this was their primary concern and we demonstrated that's doable at that point. So that that's good. Our architect is also going to talk about the fire suppression systems with this building, which are. Which are quite good, but I'll let him get into those. But, Mr. Taylor, to your question, yes, we we went through with them and they're they're satisfied, so we're we're happy that they're content they'll be able to serve this building.
Thank you.
In the event, hopefully, we'd ever have to deal with it, but we always have to prepare for it.
Yes, exactly. And I'm like others, I'm so happy to see this building is all electric and that you're. Reducing impervious cover and making the site more absorbent. Really, really important, and I I wonder whether. I have questions about the rain barrels and wonder whether you might have considered or would consider. Larger cisterns instead of. Or maybe possibly in addition to a collection of smaller rain barrels. This is such a big building that I'm not sure. How many rain barrels you would need in order to. Really address or or, you know. Make a big difference because they can fill up fast in the kind of rain that we had. Over the past several days and I've seen some very cool, pretty big cisterns that. That can be. That are fairly slim and mounted along the wall and are and can even be sort of nice looking and. It's just just an idea. But another question I had about the rain barrels is, would they be maintained by? A landscape contractor or property management firm or something?
They would be, they would be. It would be a property management firm. Who may themselves contract out that service, but it would it would definitely be overseen by our management company.
Take take a look at cisterns. You might you might find you might find them a more practical, if you're looking to really detain and reuse. The the stormwater, then you you might find cisterns are a more practical choice.
We we will look at them.
Are there other questions from board members for Mr. Winters? I see one one hand that's been up among attendees. For the longest time and under the name Skillman. I guess I would want to understand whether Skillman has a question. A specific question for someone who has testified already or whether. That person's hand is up by mistake or or what can we?
How about if I just, should I move them over? Do you want me just to allow them to talk first?
Uh, allow them to to speak. I think I think that person just now you're unmuted. Yes.
Okay, yes, this is Heidi Skillman. I'm a longtime resident of Princeton. I I was born there, grew up there, and I own a building across the street.
Ms. Skillman, let me, I'm sorry, go ahead, Mr. Miller.
I I'm going to, I I know you're just asking questions now, but even at this stage, we we swear in all members of the public, so if you could raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm the testimony about to give will be the truth?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right. So yeah, it's just a question. So I I've heard a lot of good information so far in the. Last, whatever it is, almost two hours that we've been on. I have a big question about parking and there's been a number of you. Who have talked about it. Timothy Quinn was one of them. Paul Winters was another. It's been a number of things about parking. Paul Winters was another. It's been a number of things about parking. What I've heard so far out of forty-five units, and and please, somebody correct me if I'm wrong, is there are thirty-eight parking spaces plus six EV pace spaces. So that's forty-four spaces. And there was somebody else talking about guest parking, and that was a very good question. And then someone else said, well, maybe they can just park on Charlton Street. And, you know, parking is pretty restricted around town. Somebody said it isn't in that particular area. I forget who that was. I didn't write his name down. But I disagree. And, you know, there's a lot of commercial businesses in that area that need that parking, and it's rare. So I'd like I'd like someone to to really talk about the parking spaces that are allotted for these forty-five units. I'm not sure if they're one or two bedroom, even a one bedroom can have two people in it with two cars. I'm not sure it's enough, and I'd like somebody to reassure me that it's enough so it not doesn't congest the other streets and 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 take away from the residents there or available parking spaces for the commercial tenants that.
Ms. Skillman, I'm I'm going to interrupt because I understand what your question is. And this is a part of the meeting where we're purely posing questions rather than making, you know, comments on the general application. But but I hear you. And I'll say that my understanding of the parking, and I would ask the applicant to confirm this or correct me, is that there are thirty-eight spaces total serving forty-five new apartments plus two existing residences plus the commercial tenants who share the parking with the residences. And that and that is, I I I'm, you your your point is taken, Ms. Skillman. I I'm going to ask Carrie to to move you back over, and you'll have another opportunity to to speak, you know, later on. So anyway, is that is that is my understanding correct, Mr. Winters? And can you speak at all to the concerns that Ms. Skillman raised? And then after you speak, Mr. Boddenheimer, invite you to speak again, too. Go ahead, Mr. Winters.
And and if I may, as part of that, if you could just explain how the thirty-eight spaces became forty-two space credits?
Yeah, so I can I can address that. And and thank you, Ms. Wilson. That was that was almost perfect with the description of the numbers and everything. I have one small clarification with it, but your your recount of the counts is correct. The the only note I'll I'll mention is that while there's no requirement for this lot to provide parking for commercial users, the applicant is expressed they're willing to look to allow that and a sort of shared parking capability during daytime hours. But again, it's not a requirement.
Oh, it's it's Tom.
Yes, Tom.
Why don't you start by describing what the ordinance, this overlay ordinance says about parks? Okay, start there and then indicate how our plan complies.
Yes, sir. And with the ordinance requirements as written, we are obligated to provide one parking space per residential unit with allowing for a credit for the first five units, which are not required to provide a parking space. So for the forty-five new units plus two existing units, we have forty-seven residential units. And we're automatically credited five units that are not obligated to provide a space under the ordinance. So that would be a requirement of forty-two.
Okay. We also get a credit, I believe, under state law related.
Yes, yes. The second part of that is the state law in effect for electric vehicle parking spaces as the state defines with electric vehicle supply equipment is permitted to count as two times the provided parking. So each space is permitted by the state statute to count as two up to a certain number. And in this case, the number is ten percent of the total. So we're not counting twice for all six of the electric vehicles, vehicle charging spaces, just for four of those. So we're effectively getting a credit up an additional four spaces for those four of those. Excuse me, I said the word four one too many times. We're getting a credit of four spaces applied to four of the electric charging spaces. So those four come off of the forty-two requirement, and it brings us down to the thirty-eight requirement. We were providing the thirty-eight spaces. And again, that does comply. We are complying with the standard as written with our proposed parking count.
Okay, thank you for that overview, Mr. Boddenheimer, and then Mr. Cohen.
So so please don't think I wasn't listening to that previous discussion. I'm going to ask very simple questions. You can answer them simply. There's an ordinance that establishes the number of parking spaces per unit and the number of parking spaces that are required overall on the project. Is that correct?
Correct.
Yes. And your building as proposed complies with that?
Correct.
And that ordinance reflects policy of the municipality?
Correct.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Boddenheimer. Mr. Cohen?
So as a member of the governing body that passed the overlay ordinance, I'd just like to shed a little more light on what Nat was just talking about. So, you know, this overlay ordinance was developed to encourage car-free living in the center of town. And that's why the parking requirement is as low as it is. And there's nothing in the ordinance that says that a developer cannot provide more spaces than what are required on the ordinances. But we rely on our developers to gauge the market and understand what kind of tenants will be interested in living in their building and how many cars they're likely to have. And so, you know, we we believed and understood that developers, if they thought their residents would need more parking, would provide it. And maybe Mr. Albert wants to talk briefly about, you know, the any market studies they've done to confirm that this number of parking spaces, you know, they'll still be able to rent out their units with with this number of parking spaces. But I I just wanted to share that thinking that was behind council's decision to set the parking requirements where they did.
Thank you. That that is really. I appreciate that. Mr. Albert, you want to?
Well, I'll I'll just be very, very brief. We we believe that the parking is adequate here. This site is blessed in its location with being among the most walkable sites in the entire community. And I I happen to own a building farther, a little farther away from this, at two fifty-three Nassau Street, where I I do have residents there that have no have no vehicles by virtue of the fact that they either work in and around the university or someplace in town where they can take advantage of not having a car. So we believe that the parking here is adequate. Would we love to have, you know, dozens of more parking spaces? Perhaps, but we have tried to maximize the parking on this site, given given all of its constraints and balancing it with the need for, you know, for providing other facilities. So but we do think it's adequate. And as Mr. Cohen says, it's it's really it's really to our detriment to the extent that it doesn't work. And so and we're 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 banking on the fact that it does, and we're willing to spend a good deal of our of our resources and to make it all happen.
Thank you for that. Mr. Letizia, who is your next witness?
That is John McCormick, our traffic engineer.
A good segue.
Yes.
Good evening, everyone.
Mr. McCormick, you were previously sworn. Let's begin by having you provide the board with your educational professional experience, please.
Absolutely. I have a bachelor's of civil engineering from Villanova University. I've been practicing traffic engineering for more than twenty-five years. I have been licensed as a professional engineer for more than twenty of those years. I have presented private land development applications in front of planning boards throughout the state. I'd probably say over a hundred at this point. And I've also served as the traffic consultant for numerous planning boards. So I I sat on the board and assisted boards as your professionals are doing tonight.
Thank you. I offer Mr. McCormick as an expert in traffic engineering.
You muted.
Sorry about that. I muted myself instead of unmuting myself. We accept your qualifications. Thank you.
Thank you. The silence was eerie.
Is it correct that your office prepared a traffic study related to this project?
We did, yes. I just started sharing. And I'll I'll get into that, Tom. Can you see the, I guess we're calling it A three?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Just wanted to make sure we see that. Yes, Tom, we prepared a very traditional traffic study. It was dated June ninth of this year. And it was presented to the board, and it was reviewed by the board's professionals. You want me to just go with my direct tone?
Yeah, why don't you just go through?
Very good. The beauty of going after Paul is that he is very thorough, and he hits a lot of what I have to say, quite honestly. In the interest of time, I will skip through some topics rather quickly. And obviously, any questions at the end, I would be more than happy to dig in in more detail. But essentially, that traffic report went into site access, went into traffic generation, driveway operations, and parking layout and supply. And I'll touch briefly on those on those topics. So there was a lot of discussion already about access. As you know, right, we're proposing access to Nassau Street. We're going to convert that existing access, which is very important. We're maintaining the location, but we are converting it from currently a two-way driveway, even in its most narrow state of about twelve feet. We're converting that to a one-way exit. So that is very important. This is a significant access improvement to this property. Having the exit drive is much safer, obviously, than having the two-way traffic. One, it eliminates the turns off of Nassau Street, which are typically a little bit higher speed turns as drivers are more more focused on oncoming traffic than they are than they are maybe pedestrians on the sidewalk. So we really like the fact that this is an exit-only. It provides not only a stop condition for that driveway, which then provides good sightline for both the pedestrians on the sidewalk as well as the traffic going along Nassau Street. The Charlton Street access points, Paul did a lot of talking about those as well. We're obviously maintaining their location. The the northerly driveway or the left driveway on our on our graphic, you know, is a twelve-foot wide. It's one-way entrance for our traffic. The other is twelve-foot wide, one-way exit for our traffic. But important to note, and Paul did mention, is that the easement and the access for the university building, which is tucked inside the corner, will be maintained. That will be unchanged. That shared access opportunity will still be in place with this plan. The driveway redesign provides good distribution of traffic. It allows our residents to exit either Nassau or Charlton, which is really rather critical. It seems simple, but it's critical because Charlton is a one-way. So it avoids some over circulation in order to get around, you know, when you leave the site. And again, the one-way driveway, it really simplifies our vehicular movements and is a safer situation for our motorists and our pedestrians. We'll touch on traffic generation. This is one topic Paul did not touch on. So our report discusses that. But forty-five apartments, quite honestly, generates really rather minimal traffic. We always refer to ITE, which is the Institute of Transportation Engineers. They are the industry standard for how we estimate traffic generation. When you look at the ITE estimates for forty-five-unit apartment building, the traffic generation estimate is eight trips during the peak morning hour and eighteen trips during the peak evening hour. So, you know, those are really relatively minor traffic generation projections. Add to that, we believe that that's that traffic generation scenario is really conservative. And our traffic is actually going to be less than those numbers. And I'll say this for two reasons. The first is that the ITE actually recognizes that trip generation in dense multi-use areas, you know, such as the corner in Nassau or Charlton here, actually generates less traffic because of the mix of land uses, the downtown setting, the walkability, a lot of the things you heard Paul and Jeffrey speak about already. So if we had utilized that dense area land use from ITE, those eight and eighteen numbers would have been even lower. The second is that we can't forget that we are eliminating a significant portion of existing office space. We're calling that building the motel. It's two-story. There are tenants on top and bottom floors of that finger, if you will, that extends into the site. So by removing approximately four thousand square feet of office space, we're removing the commercial traffic and the and the activity that goes with that. So when you combine those couple of things, we think that the projections that are that have been prepared are conservative and that these apartments will really have a very low footprint, very minimal traffic increase to this area. Well, so let's get into the internal geometry. I noticed there were some questions, comments, and I guess David and I will will have some discussion about that. Generally stated, the the one-way aisles are about twelve feet in width. The two-way aisles are twenty-two feet in width. These are actually improvements over, well, let me let me say this. So the Iowa's are twelve and twenty-two. The parking spaces are really fairly common sizes. There are nine by eighteen spaces. The compact spaces are really not even that compact. They're about eight and a half by seventeen and a half, which is really not that small. But since they're below nine by eighteen, we're calling compact. The angle spaces that you see out, I'll call outside the building, but still under the building, are nine by eighteen. And the parallel spaces along the house at thirteen Charlton are traditional-sized parallel parking spaces. So really, the improvement you're seeing here is significant over the existing condition. I don't have an existing aerial up, but if you look and you walk the site, as I know some of you did, you'll notice that currently, all of these commercial properties are utilizing parking spaces that are only eight feet wide. So right now, the parking spaces are undersized and particularly undersized when you're considering it's a commercial, commercial property, commercial use and that type of turnover and potentially unfamiliar users. Additionally, the drive aisles that are in the site do have spots that are twenty feet or so. So we are proposing twenty-two feet as our minimum. So while these dimensions, you know, might be requiring a design waiver here or there, they are definitely common. They are common in a more dense, you know, dense area of development, infill-type projects in particular. And they're very common in parking garage-type settings, and particularly for residential uses where our our users or parkers are residents of the building. They are very familiar with the parking operations, the layout of the site, what is needed to to do to access the parking lot. If we'll go to an industry standard, just to put that into the record, we do look at the industry standard publication of dimensions of parking. It is published by the ULI, the Urban Land Institute. When we talk about parking spaces, it does allow a parking space width of about eight foot, three inches. So we significantly exceed those parking space sizes, even with our compact. And it allows the the aisle width within a parking lot to be down to twenty-two feet, which is which is why we have a twenty-two-foot wide drive aisle. So. So not only are we wider than the existing condition out there, we do satisfy the industry standard publication dimensions. So let's talk briefly just about the area right in front of the access drive or the garage drive. Let's see, I don't know if my cursor is showing up. But right in front of the entrance and exit to the to the garage. You know, as was mentioned by Paul, this is a very low-volume, low-speed site. The, I know the red property line that you see on this drawing, you know, gives the impression of a very hard corner there. But remember, we have, we're providing a shared access to the university property in the corner. So that red corner is not as hard in real life as it may seem on this graphic. So the jog is not quite as evident or as intrusive as it may appear. And remember, this is a much better situation than what's out there now. What's out there now is we have driveways that are 12-foot wide that are two-way traffic, particularly the one going out to Nassau Street is probably 60 feet long, 50 or so feet long, that's trying to negotiate the two-way traffic. So we feel that at a central location in the site, when you're exiting the parking garage at a stop condition, there's plenty of opportunity and ability to see what's happening around you and in front of you. And we really don't see any, any, any issue with the driveway layout at the front of the building. I I don't really know if I need to talk about parking anymore, then I'll simply say we satisfy the parking requirement. I think that's, that's pretty much enough. I will, I will add on a little bit to Jeffrey's comment that we're confident that the parking supply is sufficient. We're confident because rideshare has really taken off. It really, you know, eliminates the need to have a vehicle. Jeffrey touched on walkability. I use a tool. It's it's pretty neat. It's a, it's a walkability evaluation tool. It was developed by urban planners and it's called WalkScore. And you can type in WalkScore and then you type in an address and it 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 kind of factors in all the things that we've been talking about tonight. And it gives a WalkScore out of 100 as to how walkable this area and this site is. So we did that, and I'm sure a lot of you are doing that right now. So 195 Nassau Street gets a WalkScore of 95 out of 100. It's called a walker's paradise in this tool. So it, and what that means is that daily errands do not require a car. So, you know, when we look at all these kind of components and all these factors that we've been talking about so far, we are very confident that the parking supply is adequate. You'll notice that WalkScore also has a bike score next to it. Bike score, you'll be happy to know, comes up at 95 out of 100 as well. And then we can't forget about the transit opportunities, right? We have NJ Transit and we have the Tiger Transit literally right out front of our site, right in front of the driveway. So as Jeff Jeffrey said, we are, we are very confident that we have a supply that is adequate. So really, summary is that, you know, in the access, we're maintaining the driveways. We're simplifying the driveways. The university access remains unchanged and all these situations are safer for both motorists and pedestrians on the sidewalk. The trip generation is minimal, especially considering the location on Nassau Street, the walkability, et cetera. We're removing a portion of commercial traffic in that 4,000-square-foot office space. And the driveways will operate safely and efficiently with the traffic on Nassau and on Charlton. The parking satisfies the requirement. And we talked enough about, you know, transit access and walkability. So overall, from a traffic perspective, this this project is going to have a positive impact on this section of, in this corner, Nassau and Charlton.
Thank you, Mr. McCormick. I know we have a question for Mr. Bodenheimer and our own traffic expert, Mr. Barry has his hand up as well. And sometime in the next several minutes, I guess right after we finish talking about traffic, we will take a quick break. But Nat, you have a question?
No, I have a comment again. I just wanted to say that I'm completely prepared to accept Mr. McCormick's assessment of the traffic projections as being conservative. You know, and if you have a chance to take a look at the US EPA's mixed-use trip generation model and the website and all the documentation around that, the mixed-use trip generation phenomenon that he describes is is real and documented. And the model that EPA has developed and a number of other traffic engineering firms have have developed their own tools on the on the basis of, is based on statistical observation of mixed-use development projects around the country. And it's a, it's a significant step up from the regular ITA trip generation rates for development in this kind of a development setting. So I think it's completely reasonable and appreciate us having brought it up. That's all.
Great. Thank you. Mr. Barry and then Mr. Cohen?
Thank you very much. I'm here on behalf of John Hess, who produced the August 3rd Traffic Engineering Review Letter that I believe the board has received. And I understand Mr. McCormick, Mr. Albert, Mr. Winters at all have received as well. So, Mr. McCormick, we would just like to go over a few concerns that were pointed out in our letter. And perhaps you can eliminate and and answer for the board to to flesh out and hopefully settle the board down regarding what what I'm pointing out. Um, towards Nassau Street, you're, you are indicating a 13-foot drive aisle. This, you, you do make a statement, this is an improvement over the, over the existing condition. I'm also going to point out the interior drive aisle under the building, you're, you're indicating to be 22 feet. The standard design width for that is conventionally 24 feet. You did make, you did make some commentary on that. And I would like to ask, what's the proposed depth on your parking spaces under the building?
18 feet.
18 feet? Thank you. My next concern resides around the parking spaces under the building. The spaces at either end of the aisle, we have the the two dead-end spaces furthest, furthest from Nassau and then the two closest to Nassau Street under the building. Both present issues. The the two closest to Nassau Street, attempting to back out of them may be difficult because there's, there's no, no bump out to, for a vehicle in their backing out movement to, for the rear of the vehicle to go. Whereas the the head-on parking on the opposite end of the, of the facility, it appears that there's a very long reverse movement to be made or a very difficult multi-point turn to be made. Um, I, I'd like you to, if you're able to expand on on your solutions to to what that, those might be.
All right. So we'll take them one at a time. So the two that are closest to Nassau Street that essentially are, I guess you'll call it up against the wall there. You know, I'm glad you brought up the the point of the the depth of the parking spaces, right? Because we're using 18-foot depth and even in that corner, we have over 17, 17-foot, eight inches. So what we find is that cars in these spaces, one, they're familiar, right? They understand, okay, that's the corner spot. I got it today. I understand what it is. They're not in a hurry. They're not coming out of a convenience store. These are people that live there. And the geometric answer is, you know, we have 18-foot or so, we have a 22-foot aisle and we have an 18-foot space across from it. Right? If my math is right, and I did it quickly, that's a 58-foot span. Vehicles nowadays are really only about 15 or so feet. So if you have 15-foot vehicles in each of those spots, you have a 30-foot aisle in between, right? So, no, that's my math as well. 28-foot. So it significantly expands the effective use of that space. We, we really, we don't see any concern about those spots. Smaller cars are going to find those spots, find them perfectly acceptable to get in and out of once they understand that that's, that's how that space has to operate. The spaces that are opposite Nassau Street are a little bit more difficult. It will take a multi-point K-turn to get out of them. Or more likely, what's going to happen is those will be the last two spaces on the whole property that are used. And when they are used, vehicles will either pull forward in and back out to the driveway or they'll pull in and they'll back into the parking space. Again, remember, while it may not be ideal, these are residential apartments. This is not a commercial turnover where people are unfamiliar. A low-volume, very low-speed parking lot. There's no through traffic. This is not a shopping center driveway. So we really, while we see it is not ideal, we agree with that. It is our best attempt to maximize the space here to provide parking spaces that we think will be usable by residents of the building.
Thank you. Um, my last comment of concern, and you did address this during your commentary, but for highlighting, Mr. Chow had actually brought this up earlier. The entrance and exit movement from the parking lot through, under the building does appear to be directly opposed to the entrance from Charlton Street. And that region also appears to, even, even the the documentation that was provided didn't, at the time, to my understanding, highlight a cross-ass access with Princeton. But the, the corner of the, this inside corner in the, in the paver area, yep, that one, that, that area does, does potentially provide a point of congestion.
Well, it does. And as I said, remember, you're going to have drivers that are exiting the garage, residents are sitting at a stop location, able to view everything that's happening in front of the building. There's plenty of time to make a decision whether they want to exit out to Charlton and can make that move or if they see someone on the odd chance someone is coming in at the very same time, they will have the opportunity to sit there and wait for their neighbor to come on into the property. Again, this red corner really gives the impression of a hard corner, like a fenced corner or wall. That is not the case. This, this area here is the access for the back of the university building here. So while this looks like a hard property corner, it is a property corner, but it is still asphalt area that potentially could be used if there are the slim chance of two people coming and going at the same time. You'll notice we treated this area with a paver block style, you know, paver to bring attention to the fact this is at the front of the building. This is not going to be a high-speed raceway where we have a constant in and out trying to get past each other. So again, as Jeffrey mentioned, we are comfortable that this layout, while that job may not be ideal and may look less ideal from a plan view, that in reality, that's not an issue at all.
Thank you, Mr. McCormick. Madam Chair, Board, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Barry.
Barry, Mr. Cohen?
Yeah, I, I apologize if you addressed this and I, I missed it, Mr. McCormick. But I think you were going to be the one to talk about how the concerns of the fire official were addressed for onsite circulation and firefighting access for the building. Did, did I miss that or?
Well, Paul addressed it. I was not at the meeting with the fire officials. Paul was. So what, what his, what his mention was is that the fire officials are going to utilize basically the entrance drive here off of Charlton or the leftmost drive off of Charles, Charlton to sit there and situate their vehicles as needed. Unfortunately, I wasn't in the meeting with the officials, but that was my understanding. And that, my understanding is that the fire officials are comfortable with that discussion and with that, with that opportunity.
So, I mean, is there adequate space for them to deploy their outriggers there?
Well, I'm not a fireman, but if the fire company came out of that meeting and were acceptable to, to the situation, I'm assuming that, that there is. I don't want to speak for, you know, the fire chief.
Mr. McCormick, just to jump in, Mr. Cohen, we had that discussion with fire and we demonstrated there was room for their outriggers at that location to their satisfaction.
Great.
Good question, though. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Paul.
If there are no other questions for, oh, Mr. Chow, excuse me, go ahead.
Yeah. The egress along onto Nassau, it's directly opposite, what is that street? Moore Street?
Moore Street.
Yeah. So as a cyclist, like I've, I've come up more toward Nassau and I turned left to go home. And it gets tricky with traffic because of Charlton. You know, you, you, you're turning left and then you got to deal with another intersection right away. So now you're putting cars coming out of that, that trackway, the driveway out to Nassau. And, and if you have a car that's turning left from Moore onto Nassau, you have to deal with the car opposite and then immediately you have to deal with, you know, another intersection or Charlton. Is there any concern with increased accident risk with that? That, I, I guess I'm, I'm thinking, do we really need the, the driveway out to Nassau? If, you know, if we manage the traffic more to the farthest right driveway and have all the cars go under Charlton, it, it doesn't complicate the intersection on Nassau as much.
I would say that we are simplifying the intersection at Nassau Street. Remember, that driveway exists today as a two-way driveway. So we are maintaining the exit approach, which is stop-controlled. So that, that driveway comes out across from Moore and is identical to every four-way intersection in the state. Moore is stop-controlled. The driveway is stop-controlled. Everyone is viewing each other. They're directly in line. We think this is a significant improvement and, you know, we don't see it as an issue at all.
Could, could I just make one other quick point? And that is, Charlton is one way. So the intersection of Nassau and Charlton is, Charlton does not affect Nassau. So it's, yes, it is another intersection, but it's not an intersection that interferes with the flow of traffic on Nassau Street.
Unless you're on Nassau Street and turning left onto Charlton. I mean, I'm, I'm not, I'm just saying there's
That's correct.
There, there are scenarios where, where what Mr. Chow was mentioning. But I, but I take your, I certainly take your point about the existing condition being two-way and changing it to one-way definitely does, I mean, simplify the movement.
Well, it not only, it not only, I'm sorry. I was going to say it's not only simplifies, but it also makes it predictable. So that, once this traffic pattern is established, it will be known by pedestrians as well as, as the, as the motoring public exactly what to expect there. Right now, it's the Wild West because traffic is coming from either direction off of Nassau Street in and out of that same, of that same access point.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Quinn?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a, a quick question. The board received a memo from Fire on, that's dated September 12th. from Fire on, uh, that stated September 12th. Has there been a follow-up, uh, memo after a meeting with the applicant? Um, and because I, I, I sure, not that I don't trust, not that I don't trust the applicant, and I agree with Mr. Bodenheimer's, uh, enthusiasm for this as an infill development. But we are kind of taking your word for it, that, uh, you're, I think that that, I'm not a lawyer, but I think that that's kind of hearsay. Uh, if you say that they're okay and this board has nothing to base that on, but your testimony, which is sworn testimony, I agree.
Uh, Tim, I think at the very least, we want to ha- have a condition or set of conditions, um, which provides that emergency services ha- has to sign off on this and be satisfied that the plan is, is submitted is, will work and is satisfactory to them.
Thank you, Jerry. That's exactly where I was headed, so.
That's fine.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Chow, your hand is still raised. Do you have any, any follow-up questions or anything? I, okay. Uh, any other questions for Mr. McCormick or Mr. Barry? Okay, um, Mr. Letizia, before your next witness, I'd like to take a break. Um, as, as quick as we all can.
Madam Chair.
Five minutes, everybody gets mad. But let's make it seven minutes. Uh,
I'm sorry. Uh, we also allow the public to ask questions after each, uh, discussion and we just finished traffic. So I didn't know if you wanted to continue with that.
Um, thank you. I, I appreciate you bringing that up. Are there member, oh, I do see a, a hand up. Thank you.
Mr. McCarthy.
Mr. McCarthy has a question, um, for presumably, um, for Mr. McCormick, so you can bring him over.
Okay, he's over.
Um, Mr. McCarthy, I'm not, I'm not actually seeing you yet.
Yeah, I, uh.
Oh, there you are. Can you activate your, um, your camera, please, sir?
Yep, getting it up here.
Okay. And you, you have, uh, questions specifically, um, regarding the testimony we've heard, not general comments, which we can hear later?
That is correct. Yeah, for, for, for Mr. McCormick, uh, in particular.
Okay, I think Mr. Mueller wants to swear you in first.
I'm going to swear you in. Absolutely. Do you, if you raise your right hand, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth? I do. So I swear in front. Thank you. Uh, I think it's probably an omission, but I, I was looking at the, uh, traffic impact study as it's posted, uh, on the, uh, at the document center on the town website. And, um, with respect to the, the driveway at, um, nine and eleven Charlton Street, um, it, it had the, it had the traffic, um, volume, uh, the analysis for, for current, uh, and for uh, no build, but it did not have it for a, a build situation, which it did have it for the other two driveways. And I was wondering then if you could address how much increased traffic there will be on Charlton Street. I understand that the entire project is not expected to generate much more traffic, uh, in the area. Uh, but specifically how much of that traffic is being shifted on to, uh, Charlton Street where it currently, uh, is not, uh, used for that?
Sure. Figure eight, uh, should show you the build scenario, right? Traffic volume.
Okay, I didn't, I didn't see that in Appendix C. That's what I was looking at. I think it might have just been, maybe it's elsewhere in the report.
Can you give a page number, Mr. McCormick, or something more than figure?
Last page of Appendix A. I think what you're seeing is that we have the one-way driveways proposed. So some of the movements that were in the existing condition are no longer there when we designate the driveways as, uh, primarily one-way for our residents.
Okay, and, and so, so the right, the current, um, right-hand turn traffic from Charlton Street to the, uh, nine-eleven Charlton, uh, designated ingress, um, how much of that is going on now and how much of that will hap- will it go on, uh, after the build?
Okay, so, uh, currently from Charlton is
We, we cannot hear you, Mr. McCormick.
So currently from Charlton, or we'll call it the no-build traffic volumes, there are, uh, two trips turning in during the morning, zero trips turning in, in the evening. Uh, similarly, exiting to Charlton in the no-build situation, you have two trips turning out and five, in the morning and five trips turning out in the evening.
Okay, and then, and then turning into, uh, the, the ingress driveway after the build, what were the numbers?
Ingress drive is, we were existing, right, right, right. Uh, what happened is it's, the numbers are higher because we had the reroute volume coming in from the Nassau Street driveway. So coming in Charlton is ten in the morning and is fourteen in the evening.
So, so the evening has gone from zero to fourteen?
Yes.
Okay.
And exiting is four in the morning, seven in the evening.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you, Mr. McCarthy.
And, and just to clarify, that accounts for the decrease in the office traffic or it does not?
It does not. The analyses, thank you, uh, Mr. Cohen. The analyses in the report are conservative. Uh, I didn't mention it because I kind of forget to mention it because that's how we do these reports. There are lots of factors that could go into making these numbers a little bit more aggressive, but we take a conservative approach. So the removal of the office traffic is not in there, uh, and the higher of the ITE estimates is utilized. So, uh, thank you, Mr. Cohen, for pointing that.
Madam Chair, I think I have a, a question if I may, uh, at one point, ask the witness.
Uh, yes, uh, yes, go ahead. And then, um, Ms. Sax, after Mr. DeGresio.
Okay, thank you. Uh, uh, first of all, just to clarify the record, I'm Christopher DeGresio from Figury Drinker Bit on Reef here on behalf of trustees of Princeton University. Um, as the applicant indicated, Tom Letizia indicated, um, we have been talking to them, um, trying to work through some of our concerns. I just want to make it clear, we are not objecting to the application. Uh, we have a couple of points and I did outline them in the letter to, uh, the board attorney. Um, there were three points and this particular first, um, traffic touches upon that first point. Um, I know this is a point where we're not making any kind of statements. So I just wanted to kind of get some clarity in terms of how the access is going to work to the university property because the, the, the charts that I'm looking at are a little inconsistent in terms of what I thought the circulation patterns were. Um, so John, if I may, can you just describe to me? Um, we're talking about the property at one ninety-nine Nassau Street, which is lot twenty-four. Um, the access, um, based on the arrow that I'm looking at, the plan would be coming off of Charlton, uh, Charlton Street into, um, the parking area. How would it exit?
There are two exits, uh, one exit out to Nassau Street and one exit next to thirteen Charlton. Now, that, those arrows indicate traffic movements for our site traffic.
So, no, but I'm, I'm talking about, so the university, um, the university will be exiting the property from their lots and utilizing either that Nassau exit or that other Charlton Street exit because now they're all one-way?
The intent is to not change the university access at all. So, yes.
Okay. So, so I, I was a little unclear because at one time we were talking about entering and exiting the same area, but it seems now the applicant will be utilizing our, are changing our traffic pattern to reflect the one-way system, correct?
That, that's not
No, that is incorrect.
Okay. Well, that, that's what he just testified to.
I think he already said
The testimony was that our site traffic, tho- those arrows are predominant for, for the site traffic, uh, only, just to show the board, uh, those movements.
He also testified that the, that the, that the access to the university one ninety-nine, it will be unchanged.
So, so what you're saying is the one-way entrance for the entire site is also the only exit for our property lot?
That's correct.
What?
That, that's what I'm hearing.
I'm confused. I'm, I'm sorry, but I mean, so, so you're saying that Princeton can go out the ingress point, but nobody else can? Everybody else has to exit either at the other Charlton, at the Charlton exit or the Nassau Street exit?
That's correct.
Princeton can go two ways?
They, that's right. And that's the existing condition.
Okay, but
So our traffic
Or is the, is the street going to be marked with an
Yes.
Arrow or with a note?
There'll be, there'll be clear markings out of our garage that will, that will require the traffic to go either left or right. So it could not go straight. And the, the university lot traffic, which is very minimal, will exit the Charlton exit that it now uses.
Is that the, can we, can we see the
Yeah.
The overhead again? Is that the, is the exit, is the exit that they use the, what's shown as the entrance from Charlton right now?
That's correct. So that's, that's what they use today.
The university comes in and out to that back lot, so I can't really trace it, trace it and show you the access, but they basically come in that way into the parking area and they go out that way. And, um, you, you know, and then I've heard a lot of the testimony about how the traffic and circulation is changing. And it was, you know, a concern to me and that's why I tried to have the traffic engineer explain how the access would work. And it seems, uh, you know, it seems like we may be creating a, um, uh, unsafe condition and I'm not indicating that, um, it is unsafe. I think it's just something the board and the municipal professionals need to take a very close look at. Because right now, under the current condition, not a lot of people use that. Now the Nassau Street access is going to become, uh, instead of two-way, is now only one-way, so more cars are coming in off of Charlton. Even thirteen now, instead of having its own separate driveway, will be coming into that entrance. And now our property will be actually exiting. And there was a stop sign that said, "Do not enter" on the plans too. That was a little concerning. And that's why all of these little things were, why I had to bring it up. We're going to actually be going in that opposite direction where all the other cars think it's going to be one-way. And our, you know, employees or whoever's coming from that, that lot will be going in the opposite direction. And I, I, it just, I, I just don't want to create unsafe condition for people parking in that lot.
Yeah, so there's no entrance or egress for Princeton to the, on what is, um, shown as outside of the applicant's uh, property, right? I mean, immediately to the left between the building and the, and the, uh, drive out, there's no like entrance and egress there.
The only access to that property is from the inside of our property.
Yeah, I see. Okay.
Yeah.
So, um, yeah, that is, that is, um,
Opportunity, yeah.
Yeah, so, uh, you know, as I indicated in our letter, if we're going to maintain the access in and out of that area, I want, you know, this, the traffic consultant, both the applicant and the, the town to sit down and make sure it's safe. Because it's not what the current conditions are today. There's many more people utilizing that. As you know, you saw the numbers. I think you just gave them. It's going from like zero to ten or whatever it was. Or I don't know if that was access or entrance, but it's an increase. There's more pedestrian. If it's safe and it's determined to be safe, great, then we can maintain the safe access. If it's not safe, then the applicant needs to adjust the easement or grant a new easement so that our circulation pattern is exactly the same as everybody else's. So we offered that and, um, you know, I, I think it's something that the board and the professionals need to take a close look at because, like I said, I don't want to create or have created an unsafe condition.
Mm-hmm. Well, it certainly creates a confusing si- situation, um, especially if the pavement's going to be marked with an arrow, with an in Arrow and people are going to be, uh, you know, the, the Princeton drivers are going to be driving, you know, both ways in what is shown as entrance only from Charlton. Um, anyway, other board members have their hands up. Mia had hers for a while and then Mr. O'Donnell and then Mr. Cohen.
Thank you. Um, I just wanted to suggest that we let the next applicant and their professionals go home so we don't have the same situation as we had at the last meeting. I think it's pretty clear we won't, uh, be getting to that. And so, um, we should at least offer them, uh, in, in my opinion, the off, the opportunity to, uh, vote it tonight.
I, I would agree with, uh, Councilwoman Sax and, and perhaps if it worked out, they could be, this is a concept, uh, review, correct? Maybe they could be offered the space at, a space at the university concept review, the special meeting that we have scheduled.
That's a great, really good idea.
I don't know whether it would work out, uh, but I, I agree. I, I think it would be clearly, there's a lot more discussion to be had after our very brief break uh, about this application. And I think it would be a courtesy for us to work that out now.
Yep, I, um, I agree with that. So, um, where is my?
I know that Mr. Kennedy did ask for that earlier today. If he, I know he is also here. Um, to confirm that.
Thank you, uh, Councilwoman Sax and, and, uh, and Chair and Carrie, uh, uh, much appreciated. I, especially as the person perhaps responsible for bumping two, uh, into previous meetings as my applications. You appreciate that. And, uh, I do believe the, the thirteenth, uh, would, would work for us. So, um, much appreciated. I, I, I know it's, as a concept, we weren't, um, we, we did do an informal, um, outreach and notice. So I don't know if you really take jurisdiction, but perhaps if it just be more formally announced for those who are here for that application, uh, so that they, uh, they'll know to attend.
Uh, thank you. We will, um, we will hear your concept plan, um, not as a hearing, but as a courtesy concept review on October thirteenth. Um, Mr. Mueller, do, do you or I need to say anything else about notice or there wasn't, I mean, it didn't require notice as Mr. Kennedy pointed out, so.
Yeah, I, I don't think there's anything else we need to say.
You just made sure Ryan's after us.
And again, as, as the person whose application caused Krista to need to be there on the, on the thirteenth, I, I certainly understand. So thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Kennedy. Go Phils.
And thank you, uh, Councilwoman Sax. That was a really good point to bring up and thoughtful and I'm glad you did. Uh, Mr. O'Donnell and then Mr. Cohen?
Yeah, just very quickly for my own, uh, clarification, really. The, so the, uh, the slide that was just up, the arrows, those are not indicating one-way traffic only. Those are just indicating the preferred route of traffic. Is that correct?
The, those arrows are indicating the route of traffic for the apartment residence.
But they're not, they're not one-way traffic only signs.
The signing and striping plan will be developed, uh, by the engineer. Once all this is approved, then we get to construction. There will be signing and striping on-site that clearly delineates, uh, the movements.
Okay, so and that stretch that leads out to Nassau, that's a thirteen-foot wide. Uh, and yeah, I would just like, uh, and the, uh, the uh, and yeah, I would just like, uh, and the uh, the the driveway uh next to 11, 911 Charlton, is that also 13 feet wide?
Well.
Well, okay, I, I just want, I, I just want our engineering department to determine that that is enough room for two-way traffic.
But, but this is.
Talking about just for Charlton?
No, I'm, I'm talking about that stretch along Nassau, that the university people are going to be turning left on, from my understanding, while possibly people coming out of the garage will be turning left going the other way out to Nassau.
Well, well, my, oh, and my understanding is the intent of, these are one-way streets, and they'll be um marked and signed that way.
But it was just said that the university people.
I, I know.
The other way.
The board, the board has to address that, I mean, it's.
Well, I'm trying to.
Yeah, I'd like to, I'd like to.
Could I just say that, I, the, the board has to be mindful that that is the current condition today, is that there, there is two-way traffic out of that access point, and it's only for the university traffic, which is, I, 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 I don't know, maybe Mr. Degrassi wants to opine as to how many cars can even fit into that lot uh behind their building, but it is a very small amount of traffic that would be using that egress, where all of our traffic is the ingress, and that is the current condition today.
I understand, but I would also still like uh Mr. Weisman uh from our engineering department to, to say that that's okay.
Understood.
And I, I'd like to take it one step further, uh Mr. Albert, you know, your traffic consultant has testified that you're improving the traffic conditions by making these changes to the egress patterns, so that they're one-way uh drives, you know, in a variety of locations, and they are far substandard in terms of width at 13 feet and 12 feet, and, you know, if it's not gonna be truly one-way traffic, you cannot take credit for improving the traffic flow, you can't, you know?
Well, let me just say, let me just say, let me just say a couple of quick things. One is that we're adding an additional exit that does not exist today. So we are dividing the set, uh, traffic into more access points, number one. Number two is, we are constrain, you know, maintaining the existing buildings on the street base really constrains our ability to develop those aisles. They, they can only be the widths that they are right now, and that is the only very limited condition under which that there would be two-way traffic, and even calling it traffic is, is a bit of a, is a bit of a um, uh, it heightens the existing situation.
It's a, it's a pretty big parking lot, there may not be a lot of cars going in and out of there right now, but it's at least a dozen spaces. I, I don't wanna get in between you and the university in negotiating over this easement, but it seems to me that that's what's getting in the way, I'm trying to read between the lines, that's what's getting in the way of a sensible solution to the traffic on the site overall. And correct me if I'm wrong, but I, I don't understand the reason why you wouldn't want to have the university following the same traffic patterns as you're proposing for your residence.
Well, it would require, it would require an, a, a, a new agreement with the university.
And do you view that agreement with the university as objectionable?
Not necessarily, but we would, we would resist it as a condition, quite, quite frankly.
Uh, Mr. Degrassia, is it, is it the university's position that they want their folks who work and park, I guess, at that, at that building, to be able to use both the driveway onto Nassau Street and what now is the entrance off of Charlton, that they would want to use both of those as two-way access points, of the right to use both of them as?
Yeah, I think based on their plans, uh, I mean, honestly, we just wanna have safe ingress and egress. We think that today, under current conditions, in the way it's utilized, it's safe. Um, we're not so sure about having our exit where all the other traffic is coming in for all the other uses in the same areas, you know, against the arrows, is safe. Creating a pattern that gives us access either to um Nassau Street or Charleston Street would be satisfactory, because it gives us an entrance that we're currently using, then we can back out and take one of those other ways out. I would say that to the extent that one of the exits are blocked, that we would have an alternative um way to exit, if, for example, a delivery truck comes in and is blocking an entrance, or they're doing construction work, that, that any type of easement agreement also consider um allowing access through the other, exiting the other direction. Because I think it's important to maintain that if it's blocked, or, you know, for whatever reason.
Looks like Dan has a comment, he turned on his camera.
Uh, I don't think I've been sworn in yet.
No, Dan, if you raise your hand. Do you swear, do you swear or affirm that the testimony about give will be the truth?
I do.
Okay.
It's unfortunate that there is uh no existing condition uh with the existing commercial development there um of what that traffic generation is, so I think it's difficult to make the determination whether or not, if it is not increased traffic, or it is increased traffic on that driveway entering the site, I would defer that to our traffic uh consultant. And then, kinda just to echo everything that's been saying right now, um, you know, uh, this seems like it's an issue between uh, you know, the university and, and the applicant, so uh, you know, as far as we can go, I would defer to our traffic consultant. Mr. Barry?
Mr. Barry, do you consider it an acceptable situation that the traffic, the, the rules of traffic pattern would be different for Princeton such that they could go, that they would have the right to exit at a place that's marked as an entrance? I mean, to me, that, while I'm prejudicing your answer, but it, it's dangerous for pedestrians, it seems confusing for drivers, I don't know why people who are working at Princeton would, would go out that way instead of one of the, one of the egresses that's already marked as it, but, I mean, can you write in on this?
So, Madam Chair, thank you. Uh, so to, to clarify, Mr. Degrassia, you're attempting to get, to, to remain the current permission, the current entrance to be, the current proposed entrance only by the applicant to be two-way entrance exit, yes?
No, I'm saying that based on the way I'm reviewing the plans, they seem to create an unsafe condition that is not there under the existing condition, which we have ingress and.
Not true, that's not.
It's, that's not true.
So, so, Mr. Degrassia, in fairness, the, the parking lot that, that Princeton utilizes, the entrance and exit to, to that parking lot is into the common area uh that is the crosswalk area, the, the, the paver's area in the middle. Could, could I request um one of the applicants or their professionals pull up uh, uh site plan rendering uh A, Exhibit A3, please? Thank you, Mr. McCormick, I really appreciate this, the visual's gonna help us. So, my understanding is, is right in the middle here um is, is effectively the, the driveway where, where your, where Mr. Degrassia's Princeton's uh parking lot is, is accessed, is, is this accurate?
It's right there, yes, correct.
Okay, so someone, so a Princeton staff member coming in off of Charlton Street can use the Charlton Street entrance, goes in and parks, when they pull out and leave, why can't they continue straight and exit according to the site plan?
That's our question.
There's nothing to stop them from doing that?
Well, you have to have access rights, you can't just drive across, right now, you have recorded access rights to take us to Charlton through what's going to be the one-way.
So, so then my counter question goes to Mr. Albert. Mr. Albert, is, is amending the existing cross-access agreement to, or modifying the existing cross-access agreement to permit this movement really that difficult to achieve?
Uh, I'm not sure what you're asking, if you're, what you're asking is, let me just, let me, let me see if I can clarify. First of all, in point of fact, what happens right now is that, is that the Princeton University people that drive out of there go wherever they wanna go, irrespective of the rights that they, that they are um, you know, are, are granted by particular easements. I, I understand what you're asking, which is why can't the traffic just flow that way? And that's what would happen in, in point of fact, but what Mrs. Degrassi is saying is that he wants that in a, in a written easement, and um, you know, I, I just don't know exactly how that would come about, and, you know, we, I, I think we could work with the university on various options, but we would resist having that as a specific condition of any approval that the board might grant.
I, I don't understand what the, why this is such an issue.
I don't, I don't.
For the applicant, um.
We have to, we, well.
I don't, I don't get it. What's the problem with creating a, a, an easement so they can go straight out and go out the exit rather than the incredible suggestion of going out the entrance? I, I just don't understand.
We, it, we will work on it, and we, we will, we will work on a revised easement.
But could I understand, is this gonna be subject to Title 39? Will people like going down, um, say, the entrance from Nassau Street going in the wrong direction? Will they be given a ticket if they go the wrong way? Cause then it really comp- complicates things if Title 39 is going to be implemented and we're going the one-way in the wrong direction.
No, Title, Title 39 has to be requested by the landowner. So, I, I don't know, Mr. Albert, if you would request that Title 39 be enforced on this property or not?
It's not our current intention to do so, but um, we, we would be willing to, we would be willing to work with the university if we could, if we could figure out some reasonable timeframes within which um, that we both negotiate in good faith to make this happen. We have no objection to it. In fact, that's exactly what's really happening today.
And I think what Mr. Albert's referring to is, and no offense to the university or their council, but negotiations with the university tend to take months, very long time. And so that's one of our concerns, is that while we agree it makes sense, we can't let it hold up this project with a long, drawn-out negotiation on easement rights. I, I think it can be handled very simply, and that's gonna be our approach to it, and we're hoping that the university and its council will, will look at it the same way.
Tom, what, what of this condition with respect to acceptable easement, and one that's acceptable to the um municipal staff as well? It's just a um, it has to be uh agreed to as part of compliance, so it doesn't hold you up in terms of construction, uh but, you know, before occupancy, uh it has to be in place.
We can agree with that, that, we, we appreciate that suggestion, that gives us more time. But, you know, I'm thinking about this, maybe we don't even need the university's approval, we just grant them the right. We could just do that.
Sure.
Think about it, we don't need them to sign on the dotted line, we could just give it to them.
Yeah, I mean, I, I would want it subject to municipal, municipal approval.
That would.
Just so, you know, we're satisfied that everything is copacetic and, and, and impracticable, but we, but what you're saying is absolutely right.
We, we would agree to that, I mean, to, to exit out of Charlton makes perfect sense.
Yeah.
So, so what you, would you be just giving them permission, I guess, to follow the, the internal do, you know, directional arrows, et cetera, the internal um traffic movement? And not the one that they currently?
Right.
That's correct.
Do, right, so they would have, they would leave either, they would have uh right, if you will, to use either the Charlton or the.
No, just Charlton.
Street exit, both of them.
I think it would be simpler if we just, if we, if we said Charlton. They could exit out of Charlton, which would be the safe condition that I think is being asked for.
Yeah.
Is there a re?
The loop, right?
Yes.
I think that should be acceptable.
Yeah.
I agree.
That, that's fine, and that's exactly what we will agree to.
So, um, just to clarify, um, that we're looking at a entrance that's there today, an exit to Charleston.
Charlton.
Uh, Charlton, I'm sorry, excuse me, Charlton, that's shown on this plan in that circu- circular movement. Um, it's going to be perpetual, um, run with the land to preserve our rights, the university's rights of access, it's going to be for both vehicles and bikes and pedestrians, because that's how that they currently use it. Um, and that um, there's no obstruction, and in the case of an obstruction or an emergency, maybe we can talk about utilizing Nassau in case it's blocked or off, off of um, you know, if they, if, if the applicant or the owner blocks it some way, either for construction, then we can utilize another exit. Are those, are those something that's reasonable to the applicant?
We, we'll, we'll, we'll consider all of that, and we will, in, in, in drafting something that's, that the um, that the municipality will agree to.
I, I mean, I think that's reasonable, if the, if the, if the primary egress onto Charlton is blocked, then the.
Agreed.
Folks at Princeton should, should have the ability to leave the site through the driveway that empties onto Nassau, is that?
Agreed.
Yeah, and, and so nothing in this will change any of these one-way movements to two-way movements, right? The.
That's right.
That's right, yeah, that's correct.
That seems safe to me, and not really all I was concerned with.
Yeah. Well, that was a little, that was exciting.
I do have to say to Tom, Tom, it, we're not that, I'm, I'm, I'm easy to negotiate with, I can have you an easement tomorrow.
I, I thought you were under oath.
Yeah, but. Chris, you don't sign the document, you know?
Well, I may not sign it tomorrow, but I could have.
Okay, in, in this moment of levity, I'm calling a break.
All right, very good.
Uh, but let's be back in five minutes, okay?
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kennedy?
Uh, thank you, with, with apologies, I, I misread the text from my uh client, they'll be on an airplane uh next, next week rather than able to attend the uh, the meeting, so uh that uh Carrie gave me, I believe, the next available date uh, which we'll happily accept.
Okay, do we know what date that is?
I ordered in December 1st, I didn't know if we would be able to finish everything tonight, so I was trying to keep that in mind.
Uh, right, so, yeah, so December 1st it is. And thank you for your patience, Mr. Kennedy.
Of course, thank you, thank you all.
Okay. Uh, okay, next?
I call Thomas Sartor.
Um, good evening, um, I, I think I need to give my credentials. Um, I'm um testifying as a design consultant. Um, my professional degree is from the University of Virginia. My professional degree is from the University of Virginia B.S. in Architecture. I am currently employed by TCB Three Consultancy LLC, which is an architectural planning design consulting firm. I am part working part-time and semi-retired at this point in my career. And that is one of the reasons I'm testifying as a design consultant rather than an architect. I let my registrations expire in in New Jersey in twenty twenty. And so just giving you a little bit more about my credentials. I before my current consultancy firm, I ran Barton Partners, an architecture, planning and interior design firm as CEO for twenty eight years. And I grew the firm from a sole practitioner to over seventy professionals. I've testified during my career in pretty much every county in New Jersey, in Mercer County. I've testified in West Windsor, Lawrenceville, Trenton, Pennington, Mercerville, Hightstown and Robbinsville. And again, maintained professional registration for in New Jersey for over thirty eight years and was registered in twenty two other states. None of those are currently active.
Thank you, Mr. Barton. So, Mr. Mueller, I just need some assurance from you that notwithstanding Mr. Barton's semi-retired status and and license, you know, not currently you know, his license having expired, that we can still accept him as an expert, accept his qualifications, and that that's not an issue. Is that correct?
No, I agree. I don't think it's an issue.
Okay, all right. Thank you. No offense intended, Mr. Barton.
No, no, I quite frankly, I didn't, I didn't think that I would be testifying in front of planning board meetings. That was one of the things I was looking forward to giving up.
Well, I'm clutching my pearls over that.
If I can have the first exhibit, I have an assistant who's helping me. This would be exhibit four, I believe. Is that correct?
Yes, I believe that's correct. Yes.
Okay, this, this document is A one oh one dated six twelve twenty two. It's the garage ground floor plan. The orientation of this plan is the same as the site plans you've seen with Charlton Street on the towards the top of the page, which are called the north. Plan North and then to the left is Nassau Street. Plan West. The this is, I'm focusing on the floor plan, floor plate specifically. We're looking at the ground floor plan for the the built, the garage with four floors of residential over the garage level. The garage level is at grade and entered from the north, plan north of adjacent to the lot, building lobby, which is shown here in the center of the building. It's sort of a truncated L-shaped building. And you see the lobby noted and then elevator, one of the two stair towers located there and the other stair tower located over towards Nassau Street. That stair tower also serves the existing one ninety five office structure, the brick structure that was referred to earlier in testimony. The garage is a twelve thousand eight hundred forty five square foot floor plate containing thirty six covered spaces. So almost all the parking on site is underneath the building, which is advantageous because it reduces the heat island effect. Essentially, the blacktop that's existing on site heating up, heating up the air around it and warming up the the area. The plan also shows about sixteen hundred and seventy square feet of interior space, which in addition to the elevator and stair towers includes trash storage, building services and bicycle storage. There is additional bike storage and bike maintenance facilities, building services, community and additional community amenities that will be provided in a partial basement, which is not shown on the plan. That is the bicycle room which we provided, but the entire basement plan has not been provided because the final design of that basement has not been resolved at this point. But the basement will be served by both stair towers and by the elevator. So it'll be fully handicapped accessible and have meet full egress requirements. The basement will be entirely within the building footprint. And it will only be a partial basement, not a full basement. But again, it'll be within the footprint of the building. The ground floor and basement levels of the building are of non-combustible construction, essentially protected steel and concrete composite structure. The garage is naturally ventilated, so it's open air and but visually screened from around the entire perimeter, either by a four-foot-high fence, which is integral to the elevation design or solid structures such as the lobbies or the stair towers, trash room, that kind of thing. The structure is fully fire suppressed with an NFPA thirteen dry sprinkler system. And there is a three-hour fire rating between the residential portions of the building above and the garage itself. This site is as is obvious from the site plans you've seen is irregular in shape and is constrained. It's point six one acres, I believe, and the site dimensions are irregular. None of the dimension, none of the, there isn't a right angle to be found on the site. Let me put it that way. And that presented significant challenges as we designed this, the layout of the building and the site design. And that is one of the reasons we're looking for relief on the drive aisle width from twenty four feet to the twenty two feet is previously testified by both the engineer and the traffic consultant. And we feel for the same reasons that they've testified to that that we're comfortable that that the garage layout as shown will work for the intended use by a residential, by residential users who know their way around the garage. And I would add that we have, I have considerable experience with using with garages of similar dimensions and the twenty two-foot aisle width. So I feel very comfortable in that statement. If I can have the second exhibit. This is sheet, oh, okay, this would be exhibit A five. And it is sheet A one oh one dated six twelve twenty two. And this is a typical residential floor plan. In the building, nine of which are designated as affordable. The market rate units are in one-bedroom, two-bedroom and two-bedroom plus den configurations. The affordable units include one, one-bedroom unit, six, two-bedroom units and two, three-bedroom units as required by the Council on Affordable Housing, COA. And will be in and will be designed in full performance with all of their standards, which are quite extensive. The spread, the affordable units are spread out through the building, so there will be no way to identify which are affordable and which are not. They'll be on every floor. And the finish and fixture specifications for the market rate and the affordable units will be identical. The residential portions of the building are constructed of protected wood frame with an NFPA thirteen sprinkler system throughout. So the building is fully fire suppressed, which is a significant improvement over the existing structures on site. The building, as mentioned, will be a hundred percent electric. We're going to be using mini splits within the units for heating and cooling, which are a very, one of the highest efficiency systems you can use. And we will, each unit will be individually metered, which enhances the environmental aspects of the design. The building will be designed in performance with all applicable codes. If I could have the next exhibit, which is the roof plan, that would be exhibit A six. This is sheet A one oh three dated nine twenty twenty two. This roof plan is a little exhibit, a little bit different than what was presented in the original zoning submission. It is, it reflects further refinements of the design. We had an opportunity to run a drone over the site and determine where the, where the best views were. And so we decided to to modify the recreational amenities that are provided up here. So essentially on the roof, we have open-air recreation amenities provided for the tenants as well as internal spaces necessary to provide fire emergency egress and and then transitions out from the, from this elevator, well, essentially an elevator lobby to get out to the deck area. There are three sitting areas on the deck, the primary sitting area in the northeast corner of the site. Again, that's planned northeast. And then a secondary sitting area up on the perimeter of the building near the entry, centered by the entry, and then one over in the north western corner of the building where there are very attractive views, particularly of the, of what St. Paul's, I believe it is. We provided a walkway, running path around, around the perimeter of the deck. Again, to provide views at three hundred and sixty degrees, but also to provide areas for people to recreate, move around and go for a walk, that kind of thing. Though that walkway is old with the from a safety perspective, forty-two inch high railing on the perimeter. And then another screening railing on the interior to screen the mechanical equipment, which is shown throughout the roof deck. All the mechanical units are below the forty-two inch height of the railings so that we know visibility of that equipment beyond the perimeter of the building, essentially. The roof itself will be a white roof of a white roofing material, again, to reduce the heat island effect. And so essentially, there'll be substantial reduction in that kind, in that criteria. If I could have the next exhibit. I've already lost track. That's A six, I believe. No, A seven. This is sheet A three hundred, the building sections. These sections illustrate the building height and how the buildings sits on the ground. Essentially, the building is fifty-four feet, ten inches, as measured by your zoning ordinance. It is four point, four feet, ten inches above the maximum allowed under zoning. It, the reason for that is basically that in order to meet the market's expectations of nine-foot ceilings and to have the necessary structure and then sound and energy efficiency requirement, meet energy and sound and energy efficiency requirements, the floor ceiling, floor-to-floor height needs to be that nine foot or ten foot, eleven inches that is shown here. So each floor, floor-to-floor is nine, ten foot, eleven inches. And that comes, and that brings you to your fifty-four, ten with eight foot six at the garage level. That, one of the things we looked at was how to further reduce the building height. And we looked at trying to push the building beneath the grade some, but unfortunately, due to the existing stormwater conditions where the stormwater is fairly high up under underground, we couldn't get drainage from the garage. Again, it's an open-air garage. So we couldn't get drainage from the garage to that stormwater system if we push the building below grade or the garage below grade. So that's the reasons for the height. And if I can move next to the, to the next exhibit. Okay, this is A eight. Sheet A two two one dated nine twenty twenty two. This, I'm going to show you a series around the building, showing building in context and also giving you a sense of our of the exterior skin of the building and how we intend to to handle that. The streetscape elevation at the top of the sheet shows the the buildings along in profile along Charlton Street. Two, two oh one Nassau at the corner, which is owned by Princeton University. And then eleven, eleven nine Charlton and thirteen Charlton, which are owned by the applicant. And then the adjacent neighbor fifteen Charlton. The building, this is an elevation, so it's a little misleading. I think the perspectives below should give you a better sense of how, what the building will look like from the street. These are eye-level perspectives. Again, showing the buildings in the foreground and then our building tucked back in the rear. And as you see, and these are taken from the far side of the street, because if you were at the near side of Charlton Street, you wouldn't even see the building if you were adjacent to any of these buildings because they completely block the view. But as you see on the, from the far side of Charlton Street, you see the top two floors of the building only. And in the K, and it, and on the far corner by St. Paul's, you see only about one, one floor of the building itself. So because the building is located mid, mid-site and the buildings and the existing structures in the foreground, the impact upon the streetscape is de minimis, I feel. If you could blow up the elevation, I will talk a little bit more about the skin. What we tried to do with the skin of the building is we tried to determine an expression that was appropriate for the mid-block setting of the, of the building. And the new the design intent was to make the building float over the ground plane and give you a sense of a light structure. And then incorporate colors from surrounding structures into the facade itself to be sensitive to the, to the context of where the building is located. We did use the pale color, what is called pale color here to highlight the base of the building. You can see a bit as you look through the entrance drive on Charlton, you see the the fencing and then the entrance to the garage, but also as you walk down the street, you'll see the entrance to the building. One of the things we wanted to do was emphasize that entrance through signage, which is just out of sight behind eleven and nine, nine eleven Charlton, but the entrance is located right there. You can see it from Charlton Street as well as from Nassau Street. And then using the color to to emphasize where that entry is. So it enhances wayfinding in the building. And then the pale color is repeated elsewhere in the building. The stone gray and silver again are pulled from other structures, particularly one eighty-five Nassau, the Lewis Center and St. Paul's. The next slide, please. Oh, I should add, and I forgot that this, the panels here are high pressure, a high-pressure laminate panel system that is made from essentially, it's a pressured, it's a system that's made from, from wood. And so it has a really warm patina. And one of the things that's particularly nice about it is extremely low maintenance and provides a color-fast facade that will hold up over time. So we're really looking for a building that would be timeless and hold up over and maintain its character over a long period of time with minimal maintenance. This is the William Street elevation. I should say that this is she exhibit nine. And it is sheet A two 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 dated nine twenty twenty two. This is the south elevation or William Street. And it shows, again, shows the building in context. One eighty-five Nassau Street is, is roughly the same mass and as and height as our building. And and then it shows the residential streets, residential units on William Street, giving you a sense of, again, how the building is screened. The same materials are followed around all four facades of the building. The color palette remains the same, just how it's applied to the building varies from side to side slightly. The perspectives again below give you a good sense. The first one is the view from the rear of 185 Nassau Street, essentially looking across their parking parking area behind their building. And it's probably the, the area where you'll probably see the most of the building, though it's only about half the facade. The view from William Street, again, the building is substantially set back from William Street. And again, is hidden by the residential buildings and the two-story residential buildings in the foreground. If I could have the next exhibit, which will be exhibit 10.
Mr. Burton, I'm sorry to interrupt and I appreciate seeing all these perspectives, but I want to make sure we have time to pose questions to you and wrap this up. So can?
This is my last exhibit.
Okay, thank you.
And this is probably. I'm sorry, that, my second A and is the lowest elevation. I won't call on that one. I'll go straight to Nassau Street, which is the most important elevation. And I, this again, shows the building in context and gives you a sense of the bill, building as it's seen from Nassau Street. And as you can see, it's really tucked behind the existing structures on Nassau Street itself. I didn't just specify what this drawing is. This is exhibit. This would be exhibit A eleven, I guess. Or I didn't put, bring the other one into, so I'll make this A ten.
A ten.
A ten and it's drawing eight, two, 20 dated 9/2022, north elevation Nassau Street. And for brevity, that's the end of my presentation.
Thank you. I'm, I'm sorry if I knocked you on your heels there. I just
I understand. It's late.
Yes, it is. Mr. Cohen.
Yeah, I'll just reiterate the two questions I asked earlier that were deferred to you. One of which was the potential for some green roof on top of the building.
Yes.
And the other was the location of the bike parking, although I understand you, I understood you to say you don't know.
Well, no, I do know. I mean, I do know in general terms where the parking is. There's three locations on the site plan on the, on the ground floor level. And those are located in the lower right-hand corner of the building.
I, I'm sorry, not the partial basement.
Oh, the partial basement, there, the room, there is a room located in the partial basement that we actually sized to confirm we could get enough parking in it. It includes, I don't remember the exact number of parking of bicycle spaces, but it exceeded your requirements with the additional parking shorter term bike areas on the ground level. It exceeded the requirements and it also provides for a area for maintaining bicycles, a day, a workbench. And then bike stands, two bike stands for servicing the bicycles. So residents can take care of the bicycles.
It, it was about 50 or 60 spaces in the basement.
Thank you. And then, yes.
But you don't know where the partial basement is to be located yet.
I can give you a general sense of it, but I can't give you this, the exact specifics. It's located between the stair towers and the elevator in the center of the building, between the columns in the center of the building.
The, the bike storage would be located very close to the elevator.
Right.
Okay.
And then your, the green roof question. Right now, we have no intent, we, we did not intend to provide any green roof. We did, we have discussed providing garden areas for the use of the residents to do herb gardens, that kind of thing, which we're happy to do. We have not, we were concerned about the, the depth of the structure at the roof required to support. And Bill, you know, and we were all, you know, are the minimum, you know, the maximum requirements for the height. So that wasn't something we really seriously considered because of the constraints we're under. I hope that answers your question, maybe not to your satisfaction, but it's just your question.
Yeah, I mean, we could talk a little bit about it when the board deliberates, but that, that's sort of what I expected.
Yeah.
We, I would just, if, I'm sorry, if I could just add one quick comment also, we, you know, because the site is, is tight and we have very little ground, uh, ground area. We wanted to have some amenity area that was outside. And the roof was a logical place for it and that really precluded doing a lot of other things with it. So.
But your residents are going to want plants up there.
We, we No, 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 we, 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 we fully intend, I mean, we, we, the idea would be that we would, if there was enough interest on behalf of our residents, that we would have, we'd have actually garden areas on the roof. And we actually have planned for, for, for some of that and, and planned for some of the infrastructure like water and storage for tools and that sort of thing.
Uh, Mr. Tex Arnie. Thanks, Mr. Robert.
Yeah. So, yeah, just to follow up on the topic of the roof. It was mentioned that, well, in the environmental commission memo, we discussed instant, you know, putting, making room for solar and installing solar. And in the response, it was said that there was no plan for, for that. I was just wondering if you could respond to it, because, you know, I think that at least having a little bit of solar might make sense. I understand that there are some limitations in terms of, you know, providing access and.
Well, there, there are some limitations from a space perspective. However, you know, it's, it's both because of the amenities, but also because of the mechanical or our selection of the mechanical equipment essentially requires that those units be spread over. You know, you have to have 45 units plus the additional four or five more to service the various areas of the building, each of the units and then all the, all the common areas of the building. And it's not going to leave a whole lot of space for solar. Beyond that, you know, it's, it's a business decision on, and if, you know, it's up, I'm proceeding at the direction of the client. I would love to see solar, but I don't think it, it's going to be a substantial solar. You know, you're going to get a substantial amount of solar up there by the time you've done everything you need to do. The other thing is, of course, it's solar projects above the roof. And, you know, it's another thing contributing to building height. So we're very sensitive about the building height issues, but I, I understand your desire for those things, but it's a, it's a difficult decision to make in this case.
We did include vertical wind turbines that we have proposed.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I've actually done pretty extensive research on, you know, small micro wind and actually it's not really that effective. You know, it, it would be a nice, nice aesthetic piece. You're probably not going to get that much wind in downtown Princeton. And also, you know, even if you were to get wind, it actually isn't, it's not good for the building. It's a bit of a, yeah.
Well, they, it creates vibration, it creates vibration, yeah, that has to be dealt with, but.
Right, right. But, um, yeah, I, I mean, I, I think that if you can get at least a few solar panels, I understand there's those lim, limit, space limitations. But having at least a few solar panels up there could potentially cover, you know, some of the communal energy usage, you know, such as hallways and, you know, public space and whatnot. Then that kind of deals with some of the issues of, you know, who actually gets the benefits of, of the solar. Because I guess everybody else is paying their electricity bill. While we're on that subject, one of the other recommendations that the PC has had was to achieve zero energy building status. That, that probably won't be possible, because you're not going to have enough solar to, to really offset the energy usage. But I was just curious if passive house was potentially considered. That was another recommendation of the PEC.
Right now, we're meet, we're designing to meet or exceed the New Jersey energy standards, which are pretty stringent, but, but certainly not the, not the passive house standards.
Right. And so I guess it, it, would you consider yourself being able to meet any of like the green building standards? Would you say that you're com- comfortable to like lead?
We're going to be meeting just inherently in the New Jersey building code, we're, energy code, we're going to be meeting a lot of the requirement, a lot of those requirements. And I know the client is said that he's willing to do things during construction as well as during, you know, and materials selections and so on, that are going to be more energy, you know, more energy efficient and sense, insensitive. But I think that already you're, you know, the New Jersey, the current New Jersey energy standards have been upgraded quite a bit and are pretty substantial. And would probably with, with the location be equivalent to lead service silver, lead silver probably. But again, the client is not, is not, has not is not intending to go for certifications.
Um, would, would you say that, do you, do you know what the insulation levels are of the walls or the ceilings, what the R value is?
I could get that information to you. I don't have that information off the top of my head. But it's, it's, you know, the current standards are substantial.
Okay. Well, yeah, I mean, we were hoping to, to see potential passive house. I mean, it doesn't seem like that's, it's going to happen, but yeah, we do highly recommend that you make sure that it's as energy efficient as possible in terms of insulation and ceiling and, and then also that you take advantage of New Jersey's clean energy programs incentives. So, you know, all the equipment is efficient as possible. There's some great incentives there.
Well, the mini splits we're using, the mini splits we're using are substantially more energy efficient than the standards in New Jersey. I don't know the exact number, but I would think it would be 20, 20 to 30% more efficient than it was required. So we're already have a leg up on the, on the selection of the mechanical equipment.
Thanks.
Mr. Cohen.
Yeah, just one more comment on the energy efficient design. I think the, the next lower standard below passive house, but above the building code is net zero ready, which we've been hearing from a lot of the other developers we're working with is, is quite achievable. So I'd like to really urge you to look at that. I think it's a little bit upgraded. It's, it's based on Energy Star for buildings, the G star.
We, we will look at that and, and, and Energy Star, we have achieved Energy Star easily in the past. So it's, it's something that we will seriously look at.
Good.
I'm sorry.
I'm so sorry. Whatever.
I'm just being really mindful of times.
It's, it's late, it's late, yeah.
Well, I, because I, I mean, if you have a question, let's hear it.
It's, 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 it's not really a question. It's more of a point that, you know, our current zoning actually doesn't allow for, you know, higher level for solar. It's only allows for about, I think, you know, eight inches or something like that, six inches. So that needs to be changed. I think that, you know, we need to change that rule.
Thank you. That, uh, thank you. Mr. Letizia, do you have any other witnesses?
One more, and he's going to be very quick. He's our planner. And we do need to put on some planning testimony in support of our parents' relief.
All right. I mean, note to self, I would love to start with planners and architects in the future and not with the two hours on parking. Mr. Muller, you're, you're muted.
I'm sorry, just a quick question for Mr. Barton. Exhibit A four, that, that sheet A, what's the sheet?
A four would be, that would be the garage level plan.
I know. And, and what, what sheet is that in the plans?
Uh, A 101. One oh one, A 101 dated, dated six, 12, 22.
Thank you.
So I've made a commitment in the past to some board members who really have difficulty going past 11 o'clock. There's no way we're going to finish this tonight at, at 11. Uh, if we have another applicant, or excuse me, another witness and then questions and then go through all of the conditions. So and, and public comment, that's correct. So.
Let's find another date.
Yeah, I, I, I'm going to suggest that we, that we suspend this and pick it up at the next available, well, next week, if you guys are available after the concept review of the Princeton project.
Would work for Mr. De Grazia.
Well, we don't need him.
Yeah, I know. Sorry, we're getting a little punchy here, counselor.
What day, that'd be a week from today.
Yes, 13.
Just so you're aware, Madam Chair, I am not going to be covering the meeting next week. Justin is covering for me. And we have not a lot of activity going on for the first meeting in November, and I think that might be a, a better placement. We have a sign, signage plan to look at on Nassau Street. And I was going to put another sign package on, but I don't think that'd be ready. I would love to put it on for the third instead of next week, if that's doable. It's just a consideration.
Well, I, I appreciate your weighing in on that. And I, I guess I would offer the applicant a choice, because I do want to be mindful of, of their timeframe and, and whatnot and I but I, I guess we, we would, you would, you would follow the Princeton concept plan. You wouldn't start the meeting, because we set the special meeting for the concept review.
Correct. And then on the 20th, we have CRX.
Right. Jeffrey, what would you like to do?
Uh, we would love to appear next week.
Okay.
So, Mr. Muller, the, the, the proper wording about notice, we continue this until, until next week. And no further notice required.
You said it all.
Okay. Well, thank you. I, I really do appreciate it and I, I'm sorry that we didn't get through everything tonight, but I really think it's important that we not rush and that we not go until 11:30. So.
And by, and by next week, we're talking about the 13th, just.
Correct, yes, a Thursday, Thursday, the 13th. So we'll start with the concept plan for Princeton, and then we will hopefully finish this up.
We appreciate the time you've given us.
Would you entertain a motion to adjourn?
Uh, with pleasure.
I will second that motion.
All in favor? Thank you all. Thanks all very much. And we'll see you next week.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Madam Chair, Board, thank you all very much. Have a great night.
Thank you.
Mr. Barry.